The way of his saints. Father, we just thank you and Lord, we lift up President Biden, President Trump. Lord, only you know what's going on. And Father, so we pray for those two men and we ask you to bless them, strengthen them, and protect them from the wiles of someone who intends to do evil. But Holy Spirit, we ask you to fill our city, our state, and our national government leaders with wisdom, with understanding, with knowledge. Grant them favor, increase their faith, prepare them to pursue your excellence. Draw them to you and cause them to know and fulfill your purposes. Father, we pray that you protect this body from evil people who desire to do harm. Keep them safe, keep your families safe, and protect us, Father, as we conduct your business, as we help this community grow. We thank you for our law enforcement, our Sheriff's Department that takes care of us, that watches over us, that keeps us safe. We praise you for the work that they do, putting their lives on the line every day for us, watching over us. A greater department is there not than this one that watches us. Give them favor, Father, watch over them and protect them as well. And we thank you and we praise you for all things that we have. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor W for being here tonight and for those words of inspiration. We surely can use those words of inspiration now. Thank you, sir. Let's move our agenda along. Next item on the agenda, oh, by the way, you may have noticed we've got a few little new toys here, you know, equipment, right? So we, this is our first council meeting with our new equipment, new monitors, a new screen, or what have you. And so we might be a hiccup here and there, what have you, but it always comes with having new toys, right? You're trying to figure them out, you know, right when you unwrap them, you know, what have you. And then next thing you know, you're playing with them all the time. So this is welcome to everyone. So let's start our meeting tonight with our public safety report. Let's welcome Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for an update. Our captain, Nicole Palamino, is going to give us an update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palamino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I'm going to present the public safety report for June 18th through July 15th today. And I'm going to start by discussing our notable arrests and investigations. So on June 18th, at approximately 1:00 in the morning, deputies Joseph Rodriguez and Daniel Cano conducted a traffic stop of a vehicle at 153rd Place and Inglewood Avenue for vehicle code violations. During their contact with the driver, he admitted to having a firearm inside the vehicle. Deputy Rodriguez recovered the firearm and identified it as a ghost gun. The driver was arrested for possession of a firearm and booked at South Los Angeles Station, and he was also identified as being a member of the criminal street gang Longdale 13. Then on June 22nd, at approximately 7:30 PM, deputies responded to 170th Street and Hawthorne Boulevard regarding reports of an individual who brandished a firearm and pointed it at the victim. Deputy Palacios located the suspect's vehicle and conducted a felony traffic stop. The suspect was detained pending an assault with a deadly weapon investigation. Then the Longdale deputies searched the suspect's vehicle and located a firearm inside. It's important to note that the victim was not injured during the incident, and the suspect was arrested for assault with a deadly weapon and other various weapons-related violations. And that suspect was not a resident of Longdale. And then regarding our traffic-related activities, approximately 55 citations were issued during the recording period for various vehicle code violations such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. And then on the evening of July 11th, the Longdale Traffic Office conducted DUI saturation patrol in the city, which resulted in six citations for hazardous driving and unlicensed drivers. And then lastly, on August 6th at 6:00 PM, National Night Out will be celebrated at Longdale City Hall and will take place on the grass in front of the city library, and everyone from the community is invited and encouraged to attend. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, are there any questions of the captain's report? Okay, thank you for the report, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you. One question, yes, ma'am.
Do we have reports or results yet on the Fourth of July and fireworks, since that's a big one for our residents?
We do. So I can tell you that between July 3rd and July 4th, we did issue a total of 33 citations between a two-day span. That's a little bit different than last year's stats, which was 48 over a four-day span. But what I thought was interesting is the fireworks calls for service actually decreased 55%, which tells me that the residents are understanding the city's stance on fireworks, and there's less calls for service for it. So I thought that that stat was very interesting. There were 33 citations issued during that period, and we didn't have, so last year we did have unmarked cars when we did our operations, and this year we did not have any unmarked, so we did have black and white the entire time, with a total of five out there.
So what I'm hearing from the residents is there were several calls that have been placed to the Sheriff's Department, and the dispatcher would say, "Oh, well, we're already taking that." So even though the resident is, what, so you say there's less calls, but on what the frustrating part for the community is, there might have been more calls, it's just because that location had already been turned in, that we were not getting, that, hey, we have five or six calls, so there was not a line. So that's, that's an area that we need to improve on. And the next thing I would ask is, can you help us understand the low numbers of these citations, and how come there wasn't more? Because obviously, we were all in our neighborhood that night, and we saw an awful lot more opportunity than just the 33 that were written. So can you help us understand why that number is that low?
So I don't know if 33 is necessarily a low number. I mean, when I compare it to last year with the 48 over a four-day span, and then with that operation, we did have UC cars, which, remember, when deputies are in black and white cars, it makes it a little bit more difficult to catch somebody doing something wrong because they see the black and white coming. When you have undercover cars, it's an advantage for us because they don't know that we're law enforcement, and the behavior will still continue, and then we're able to observe that. So that is one factor that played into that. But I do think when it comes to numbers, I would hope every year going forward that we have less and less citations that we have to issue because the residents are doing what they're supposed to be doing and not violating the fireworks laws.
I can tell you, at my neighborhood, it was actually worse than last year. So that's, and I drove around the neighborhoods quite a bit, and I would tell you that it was equally probably throughout the city that we were in worse shape this year than last year. Is there any way moving forward that we could get you to possibly prepare something like an educational piece that, not just for the council, on how firework suppression on the sheriff's behalf is going, but also to educate not just us, but to educate our neighbors that are concerned about it?
Absolutely, and I think that that would be a great opportunity for us to do something on social media as well to educate.
That would be great. I would like to, I'd like to have that tool that when some, when we were asked about it, that we have something from you that could help.
If I could piggyback on Rhonda, the Northwest Quadrum did not see any black and whites. There was a neighbor that started at 5:00 PM, ended up at midnight. I got several calls throughout the night, and I did not see one black and white, and that specific, it went between Marin, Inglewood, and Hawthorne. It's actually Roche Grants to Marin, Inglewood to Hawthorne. There was no black and whites. There were some legal fireworks being done, but there was a lot more this year of the illegal fireworks. And I have at least four calls from neighbors. I was at work, and the first call came in at 5:30. It seemed like it was a bomb. That's what I was told. And then throughout the evening, it was the same neighbor shooting up. To me, it seemed like this year was less than last year. And we, last year, we did have our staff help out, but it shouldn't happen that way. I think we had a budget for 30 officers, or I don't know how many officers, but if we, let's say, got 10 officers, it should have been divided between the Quadrum, and I don't think it was done that way.
I can research that, and I do know that they did cover throughout those two days, July 3rd and July 4th, a total of 162 miles throughout the city that they were driving. That's what was reported, so. But I will look into those specific areas that you identified and see what calls were placed and what our response was for those.
Yeah. You sure have at least two from one household?
Before we move on, I'm getting, I don't know if the rest of you are getting them, but I'm getting texts. I've got two so far. They cannot hear on the captain at the microphone at home. The last thing I would say is, we do have a resident that did watch his tag number go through, and it was over an hour and 10-minute response time. So I would say, yes, we were successful. I don't want you to think that I'm being hard on the Sheriff's Department, because up until the 3rd, I would say the neighborhood looked a whole lot better. But on the night of the 4th, I think that we really, we could have done so much more to stop this thing. So anyway...
I don't know if I noticed this, noted this before, but we did get two pounds of illegal fireworks that we seized, and I know last year we didn't have any, so it was nice to see that we did seize some illegal fireworks.
That's nice to hear. Thank you for sharing that. That's all I have.
I do have something.
Yes, sir.
Cap, isn't it true this year, the body-worn cameras have to be taken back to the station after they do a citation and document it? Is that why we didn't have that many citations? Did they just start this year?
So we've had body-worn cameras now for several years. When it comes to body-worn camera documentation, the officer has the choice to go back to the station and dock the camera and download their video after each call, or they can do it at the end of their shift. In addition to downloading the body-worn camera footage, labeling it, watching it, so they remember what they did during that contact, they also have to fill out a series of, it's called SACERS, data that the state collects for each contact that we have. It's a little bit tedious and time-consuming, but the deputies do factor that into their day.
And then also, I want to bring up, I know you're doing recruiting, you have a couple of classes right now, but it's hard to retain and promote deputies when you have the beat cities out there with their hands and the bonuses. So let's say a class of 100, the sheriff ends up with probably, what, 10 out of that class of 100, maybe? The rest go to these bonuses, you know, sugar babies, the beat cities, and they give them all kind of rigorous kind of prices. Is there anything that we can do or the sheriff can do to have it in writing that the Sheriff's Department retain 80% of those deputies and 20% of the beat cities can go with their checkbooks and write checks? Because we're not getting the deputies, as you know that, we know it. So we can, we can ask for, on Fourth of July suppression, 100 deputies, we might only get 10, because we don't have the manpower.
That's correct, and I can tell you, when deputies go through the academy and then they lateral to other agencies, there is nothing that we can do to stop them from doing that. That's a matter of enticing them to stay on the department and not want to leave and go somewhere else. And most smaller agencies do have signing bonuses, because they're more competitive.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
As a city, what could we help the Sheriff Department do to entice them to stay on? Do we write to our supervisors? What do we do?
Well, I mean, that's kind of, that's a very layered question, because now we're dealing with deputy salaries, and I know that the sheriff is currently working on some stuff to increase deputy salaries for that very reason, so they don't want to leave and they want to stay on the department. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to write to the board of supervisors, but the sheriff is actively working on that.
Okay. That's okay. Thank you, Captain, for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from Los Angeles County Fire Department. Use this Assistant Fire Chief, Brian Kane. I assume that you're not he.
No, I'm not. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. My name is Battalion Chief Kevin Grayson, and I'm one of three Battalion Chiefs that cover the city of Longdale. I'm in here in place of Acting Assistant Chief Kane, who had another obligation this evening. In the city of Longdale, there was a total of 192 responses by LA County Fire Department in the month of June. Of those responses, 145 were EMS. Of the 145 EMS calls, 32 patients were treated and transported ALS by our paramedics, and that's advanced life support, on the way to the hospital. There were also three patients who were treated by our Advanced Practitioner Unit, and sadly enough, there were also two DOAs. As far as fires are concerned, there was only one, which was a tree fire at 17100 Hawthorne Boulevard, which was extinguished without incident. And that is all I have for the month of June. Are there any questions?
Okay, are there any questions of Battalion Chief?
We have one. Is there anything listed there? We did have a fire somewhere around the 4:05, the night of the 4th.
The Fourth of July? This, this report was for the month of June?
Of June.
We're not, yeah, I don't have the, it will be next month where we have the report for July.
Thank you. Can I also interrupt?
Yes, ma'am.
So they can hear him now better, but overall, they are having to go to the max to hear everything in the council. I don't know if the sound room can work on that.
Our technicians will make a note of it. Thank you for that. That's it. Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation. It's actually a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month for July. And I'll read it. "July is celebrated across the nation as Park and Recreation Month. The California Parks and Recreation Society has released a statewide public awareness campaign titled 'Parks Make Life Better' to inform the public of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs, and services for health, wellness, and the development of all Californians. Park and recreation plays a significant role in communities by enhancing the quality of life, providing open space for people to engage in recreational activities, and opportunities to gather and interact with others in a social setting. The Community Service Department plays an essential role in the administration and organization of opportunities for the Longdale community to enjoy open space in city facilities where young, youth, adults, and seniors can be active and participate in recreational activities." I would like to welcome Jason, our new Community Service Director, to the podium to receive this proclamation as we proclaim the month of July as Parks Makes Life Better Month, and recognize the community service department staff who utilize their skills, talents, and career activities to provide recreational and social opportunities to the communities throughout the year. And we would join Jason. Are we going to have the whole staff up there with us?
If, if I may, there's...
We still need to...
If I may, we have a brief presentation, if you may want to enjoy from your seats.
Are you going to do the presentation first?
It's a video presentation.
Oh.
Yes, so I ask you, Vett, to please cue the video.
Wow. Looking over there? That's very good. My toes happened.
So, thank you, there's a couple of cameos. I don't know if you, if you caught those in the presentation, but as a, as a new director here in the department, it was great to go through all the old photos and see kind of the vibe of what, you know, the residents and the community expects in terms of our department. A few people I would like to thank, obviously you, the mayor and city council, for your support of community services, our Parks, Recreation, and Social Services Commission, our Youth Advisory Committee, our senior advisory committees for the work that they do, our Friends and Public Works Department for the maintenance that they do to keep our parks and facilities beautiful, our Friends and Public Safety for keeping our parks safe and inhabitable, to our residents that visit and enjoy our parks and facilities every day, to David McGinnis of our cable TV team for kind of helping with some of the audiovisual for tonight. for tonight, and then all of the staff you see here in the red shirts from our Community Services Department for all the work that they do and for them, you know, helping train me on, you know, how to do things here in the city of Lawndale. With your approval of this proclamation tonight, we will have an ad displayed on the freeway message board proclaiming Parks and Recreation Month. So that's a logo that you should see when we start doing flyers. Even though July is Parks and Recreation Month, you know, Parks Make Life Better year-round. So that is a logo that you will see. That program was created, as mentioned, by the California Parks and Recreation Society. So we're happy to be partners with CPRS in over five hundred cities that all work with CPRS on training, advocacy, legislature, all that stuff as it relates to parks. And then I would ask that if you, with your blessing, Mayor, that we invite the staff to come forward and take a picture honoring July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Absolutely. Well, let's do this first before we do that. Anywhere you have any remarks they want to share, and we'll take a photo.
I do.
Yeah, and then we'll do that.
I just wanted to also mention, for those of you that don't know, we do partner with the school district to allow residents to use the school parks. We are a small city with limited resources, so I did want to say thank you to them for partnering with the city.
I'll put that in my notes for next year.
We did hear from our home viewers. And our home viewers are saying that the video came across great at home. They had sound. They said it was nice. Yeah, it's getting there.
The ratings are up.
Just as long as they can hear. Let's let them hear at home.
No, we appreciate them, you know, because you don't know what it looks like on the other end. We appreciate that. Yeah, unless anyone else have any comments they want to make? Come down, we welcome the staff, we take a picture. Let's do it.
Robert, Robert, you forgot the... The proclamation.
I think we should. I mean, we... We should say. This time. Give me the dance, I'll do a two-step.
I know that. They should have that.
Keep the line moving. Line moving. Cookies? Keep the line moving. No, what do you? You want to put this in here?
I feel like the chairs are in the way.
They kind of are.
The chairs are in the way.
Can we move this behind you all so they can... That's why I have my...
You can layer, you can layer. The shorter in the front, yeah. Are you good? Our photographer wants us to tighten up for next year's video presentation.
Come on, let us know, let us know. You know, like cats, you gotta, you gotta herd us.
I feel like you can.
Short people.
I don't want to say that, but yes.
She's to make us look good. All right, we good? You got everybody?
One, two, three. Again. Up. One. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Okay, I got a few.
Yeah, it's on. Mine is.
Hello?
Oh, you know, it gotta be way up here in order to hear it. Let me see. Yeah, I think you did something. Yeah. All right. I don't know how did it go off. Okay. Thanks, everyone. We're now on oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you would come to the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on and it'll give you the signal to start wrapping things up. And we have our new feature where you can actually watch the countdown, where you can see how many minutes and how many seconds you actually have. So you'll know whether you need to speed up or slow down or whatever you need to do. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. You simply approach the podium once the person that precedes you has concluded. Let's start with our first...
Hello, my name is Andrew Soto. I am, I live in Hawthorne City, but I have attended Lawndale schools for six years of my life. I just graduated this year and I saw interest in, I actually have a question. It's on the agenda, but it's about the approval of the Youth Development Center. I have taken an interest in what that is.
So that is actually going to be on the agenda. When we get to that item, we welcome your comments on that item. This is going to be for items that are not on the agenda. I think you want to share that it's not on the agenda tonight.
I have a question. My name is Don Delory. Hello, Mayor, members of the council.
Yes, go ahead.
Nice to meet you. Is the skate park that you guys are building on the agenda?
That is part of the community center renderings.
Okay, thank you. We'll come up with...
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is Holly Osborne from Redondo, and I'm actually here on behalf of myself, but also two other Lawndale residents who wanted to be here but could not. And this concerns the agenda for the Planning and Programming Committee that just came out. And this is for the meeting on Wednesday. And it has to do with the status of the Green Line project. There's three items. One, on the status, it mentions re-engaging with BNSF. I can tell you that Lawndale never engaged to begin with because every time I said, "Do you know any BNSF people? Did you meet with anybody this week?" No, we've never have. I never could get a person. And the Lawndale person also noticed when I sent this out, said, "Re-engage?" So all I'm asking is, if you meet a BNSF person, please get their business card. Please get me one, too? Okay. So the second thing is, there's a project on there called the 405 Widening Project. Now, I was always aware that Caltrans wanted to widen the 405, but the wording makes it sound like it's a metro project. And that just shocked me because if metro was behind it, it means that their Hawthorne Boulevard... This is a poison pill for the Hawthorne Boulevard option. And I've traced it back to October. I can send you the charts, but this really, really shocked me, okay? Like I said, I knew there was a conflict, but it made it sound like metro is behind it. And, okay, now the third thing, if you listened or were at the big May meeting downtown, the Board of Directors, and you heard Mr. Mayor Butz speak, and he added an amendment to the action to adopt the hybrid row as the BNSF. He tried to soften it and said, "We're going to live to fight another day." And remember, he said he was a Lawndalian and all that other stuff? And they were going to review more options and stuff? Well, when the Agenda My Item for May, for April, I'm mixed up, for June came out, there's no record of his amendment being in the minutes. There's, I mean, there's no copy in the minutes. And also, I've heard lots of people really downplaying that and backpack, backpedaling on it. So we need people higher up the food chain than just a regular resident to get Mr. Butz's work right at the top and get everybody on the same page. Okay, and I'll pay you five bucks for a business card of BNSF if you can get me one. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Osborne. Yes, sir.
So, hi, my number ten. So I'm the owner of the property...
I'm sorry, give us your name again.
Ten.
Ten?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm the owner of the house 4143. I ran out to my tenant right here. On July 4th, they gave me the ticket, they sent it to my house. So I go to enforcement, they want me to pay $2,500, but they want I not commit the crime. So they want me to pay for it, but I asked my tenant, they say, "Nobody do the illegal work in my property." But we still have the ticket right here.
Is that, okay, that's what I was going to clarify, that's a fireworks, some ticket. So what we're going to do...
Outside, on the Fourth of July, we were on our front porch, we were watching the festivities, but we did not participate.
The people named the war. You don't got no money for fireworks.
Absolutely.
I understand. So we do have a process. Usually, we don't talk to after everyone has concluded, but we do have a process whereby you can appeal. We can direct you to, should we start with the city manager office? Mr. Mayor and council, we can direct the folks to the Municipal Services Department. They open up at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow, and they can go talk to the staff there, and they can get the paperwork for you or get you started on the appeal if you'd like to file it. Yeah, unless you get that. Yeah.
I have a question about the actual process of administering the tickets for that. How do you guys, how are you able to accurately pinpoint where the fireworks are coming from when you guys are passing out the tickets? How is that done?
Let's have our experts in municipal services, our personnel's not here today. He usually sits there. So, Mr. Mayor, we just need to refer this over to MSD, and then they can file their appeal. And they can talk to Mr. Reyes. He should be in tomorrow. He's off sick today, but he can, he'll be happy to meet with you and explain the process and how they went about doing the fire. And was done with the sheriff's department and talk to the lieutenant and find out, you know, look at those specific... Yeah, so Director Reyes will have more insight on exactly how the process works as well as the appeal process. So I encourage you to go, to talk to him tomorrow morning, usually about seven o'clock, they usually arrive.
I, a few other papers right here, but they want me to pay $2,500 on hand first. So I say, "I don't commit the crime, so I have to pay $2,500 in front."
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's for the bail, just like, you know, if you got a traffic ticket, you usually have to pay for that first, then you appeal, and then if you're successful, then you certainly get it back. Mayor, we encourage all applicants that feel like during the fireworks season, the suppression, if they feel like they did not, were not guilty of that, to go ahead and file the appeal. Some folks, a few folks last year, there was a handful that were successful and went in their appeal. So we encourage you to file the appeal, pay the bail amount, and move forward.
I have one question, you know, I'm not living there, so how can I control the tenant, you know? Except for I didn't do it, I'm not there, so why have to get the ticket? But, you know, I can't control the tenant. I couldn't tell them what to do on it, where to go.
Whereas, insured, it's one of those activities that the incident behavior, however you put it, runs with the property. That's congruent with some so-called infractions or misdemeanors or what have you, that even if the property owner is not the one that actually did the infraction, it still runs with the property, like, for instance, certain code violations or what have you. Even if the property wasn't, the property owner is not responsible for it because it runs with the property, that's why you're included. And that's not unusual. But certainly, Mr. Director Reyes. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Dina from Lawndale resident. Well, it's July 15th, and most of the neighbors are still dealing with the illegal fireworks being shot off at the random hours. This past Fourth was another disaster with all the illegal fireworks. I wish the city would just stop selling the safe and sane fireworks for a couple of years just to see what it would be like. Yes, I get it, people would still have illegal fireworks, but it sure would be easier for the sheriff's department to cite them. I don't understand the economy the way it is, grocery, gas, rent, or house payments, utility, car payment, et cetera. How people have enough illegal fireworks to start before the sun sets and continues till after 1:00 a.m., nonstop terrorizing the neighborhoods? This must cost thousands of dollars to go up in smoke and not giving two bleeps about anyone else. I realize, no matter how often people will speak out about this, nothing changes. I think the lack of citations this year is very telling what a poor job was done. Did any of you stay home and witness firsthand illegal fireworks being lit or call it in? Or do you remain silent and just watch? I drove around the next day and saw the debris from the illegal fireworks, safe and sane crap, and safe and sane crap. Nobody picks up afterwards. I took pictures of the fireworks by the storm drain that people were throwing down. You just, you have to just love July 5th through when the news stations carry all the tragic events from the night before. The 41-year-old that decided to light a firework on top of his head, he died doing this stunt. Or a few days later, when the poor 10-year-old boy loses his ten, three fingers and has facial burns and after finding an illegal firework and lit it. I'm sure there were local calls or ER visits over fireworks also. The only thing that comes out of these tragedies is that they become the next year's spokesperson for fireworks safety. So here's a list of thank yous and shout-outs to the city officials who, again, made this holiday so special. Our elderly neighbors, who I'm sure really enjoy all the noise and explosion. The dogs and cats, who can't wait to go through this hell again next year. All the owners of the pets, who have to deal with this, it's not just on the Fourth, but before and after the Fourth. The surprise of an explosion is just that, a blast that scares and startles you. The veterans who know what it's really like to be in a war with bombs going off. All the wildlife in our city, birds, squirrels, raccoons, and possums, et cetera. The ocean for polluting it with the illegal firework trash and all the sea life that will end up possibly eating or ingesting this crap. The AQMD thanks you for all the pollution and making it difficult to breathe for a couple of days. And the special needs children who don't understand what's going on if you are a parent of a special needs child. So next year, the Fourth will be on a Friday, and I can't wait. And I hope you don't take off that Monday and cancel the meeting before the Fourth. You can still talk to us about having the Fourth and what's going to happen, a plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Randall Abram. My financial documentation for this year's three-hour Youth Day Parade indicates the sheriff's department provided a staff of 36 for the event. This included two sergeants, one lieutenant, and eight reserve officers. During this three-hour event covering a 1.1-mile route, the city of Lawndale was charged for nine hours of service per staff. Lawndale's illegal suppression plan was centered on staffing 50 to 40 additional deputies to create a visual deterrence against those blasting illegal murders on the Fourth. Unfortunately, the necessary staffing was not available or provided for an annual holiday that is problematic. For the entire city of Lawndale, only a staff of 10 in five vehicles was provided to patrol the quadrants. There was no visual deterrence, and the constant chaos rained for five to six hours. Did LASD consider recruiting any reserve officers to ride along with a full-time deputy? According to the website, there are over 650 reserve officers with the same powers of arrest as full-time deputies. None of my July, none of my five July Fourth calls, all with documented tag numbers resulted in the citation or pause in the activities. The first patrol car I saw was over an hour after my call for illegal fireworks on my street. The second one was after I was driving around in my quadrant after ten PM. Provided to you is a copy of a TNT fireworks flyer that presents various illegal fireworks suppression plans. On the side are links that provide effective examples of city ordinances. TNT has also developed a smartphone nail map that allows residents to report the possession, sale, and use of illegal fireworks in your community, along with photos and GPS locations. I recently sent the Finance Director information on AB fourteen oh three. Under this bill, cities that allow the sale of illegal fireworks can collect up to seven percent of profits from permittees to put toward local efforts to combat illegal fireworks. It is my understanding that currently, an organization applying for a permit for a fireworks stand pays only a hundred and fifty dollars. Obviously, none of this covers staff time for the oversight of this program. All other Longdale permit fees charged for residents are based on some consideration of staff time. A fence permit is four hundred and twenty for Longdale residents. If these fireworks stands are to continue, the council has a financial responsibility to the residents to have them pay their fair share and to fulfill the requirements and deadlines for this program. Last year, after city staff witnessed the use of sale and safe, safe and sane fireworks on the Fourth when they patrolled, they recommended a moratorium on sales in Longdale. It was clear to staff that those using illegal fireworks were hiding under the cover of illegal fireworks, hiding under the cover of legal fireworks. It's also what I observed when I drove through the city this year. Perhaps if the city council had followed this recommendation, would have made things easier for the limited law enforcement staff on July Fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to meet you, it's the first time here. I've come to speak about, or speak on mental health, community, and drugs. And I back up the rest of the people who've been up here about other things. It's, uh, uh, mental health.
Give us, give us your, give us your name.
Oh, very sorry, my name is Juan Granados. I live on one forty-seventh, between Englewood Avenue and, and Firmona Fir, something like that. I always forget. However, again, mental health, there's a woman on our neighborhood who suffers from mental health. I'm not gonna speak a lot about her, maybe at another date. However, we forget that there are people that need assistance that we can't give them, and there's, there's other people who, for, for example, her mother that knows she needs assistance but won't give her that assistance. And we have to suffer as a block and a community, because this woman goes up and down the block at all sorts of hours of the day and time and night. I'm pretty sure that most of the sheriffs already know who she is, and some of our, some of my neighbors that are here tonight that I did not know that we're gonna be here tonight know her as well. But also, we look for scapegoats. We look for scapegoats, and majority of the time, you know, there are the people that, if we talk about politics, these people and those people. In our community, our scapegoats would be the sheriffs. They don't wanna do this, they don't wanna do that. But we forget to put ourselves in their place. We forget that they have to go through this ordeal that we don't go through on a daily basis, that we don't suffer on a daily basis. We forget about them and what they have to suffer in the whole day. And it was, I, I found it sad when the captain came up here and spoke and nobody clapped for her. I didn't clap because I, I was like, "Maybe they'll think I'm making fun of her," and I didn't want that. But everybody clapped for the community, organizing for the parks. And I thought, "You know what, um, maybe if I have the time, I'll ask everybody, and if we could come together and give her a clap and the detectives, because they need that. They need that as well." They, they were talking about bonuses and getting more money somewhere else. I lived in Manhattan Beach, I had some experiences out there. Yes, they have a quiet, a quiet knit community, is what they said. Here, it's not so much because they have to deal with so many things, and I understand them, and we forget to put our, ourselves in their shoes. About drugs, it is, and I'm sorry I had a speech, but when we don't help other people, we, we forget that we are actually funding and helping, contributing to a chain of human sufferings. This includes that woman with mental health. And I'm sorry for the time. Thank you very much, and...
Oh, thank, thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to this body on the oral communications? Items that are not on the agenda.
Hi, my name's Andrew Blackney, and since everyone else is talking about it, I'll talk about the fireworks as well, I guess. I think the thing that doesn't come up with that, that very typically also comes along with Fourth of July, is drinking. And if you've been drinking, no fireworks are safe fireworks, because they can be easily mishandled, easily used incorrectly. And I know this from experience in seeing my neighbors across the street from me shoot off illegal fireworks while holding a bottle of tequila and drinking it. And seeing them do that and then just thinking, praying to God, "Please, God, please, don't let them accidentally tip over that thing and shoot that at my house instead of up in the air." And that's another big thing, and it, it's a big push to say, you know, we don't need to do fireworks to celebrate, to celebrate the Fourth of July. There's plenty of other ways to do it, there's also plenty of professionals that do it. There is a beautiful fireworks display that goes on in, I believe it's in Redondo Beach, they do a great fireworks display there. So we can encourage people to go there, and we just, we don't need fireworks to celebrate, especially because a lot of the people that are putting these fireworks on are drinking, and when you drink, no firework is a safe and sane firework, because you cannot operate it correctly. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we will close. Oral communications, bring up to Diaz for any comments from the council. Let's hear from Ms. Quivers.
Thank you very much for coming out and speaking out. I do have something about fireworks, but that will be after we do our council comments.
Okay. Ms. Saff McGorme.
I appreciate everybody that came out to speak today. Andrew and his friends, please stay around and give us some feedback on, on that item about the youth center. Holly, I would like to get that five dollars and tell you that I know how to get ahold of BNSF. I think my brother has been successful only one time by email, so he does have a name, but, um, uh, you're right, we aren't re-meeting with them. So, I, I appreciate your comments tonight, and I too, you brought up in an email about Mayor Butts' comments be missing. I'm a little upset about that too, because I thought that that was the most important piece of that whole meeting, was him turning around and saying what he did there to us. So, I don't know if we can look into that or question that. Sean, would you have an idea?
Mayor, Council, I have staff looking into that right now, looking at the minutes, and then the motion that was taken by Mayor Butts and Metro, we're looking into it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Dina, fireworks, I agree. We can do better, and I think that that's working with the Sheriff's Department, finding out their limitations and finding what we need to do, we can do better. I don't even like to hear the poor people that just came up that probably are innocent, and unfortunately, those are going to happen, because they're so inundated. But I also don't like to hear that the response time was an hour and ten minutes either. And so, somewhere along the way, I hope that we can, this year, before another July Fourth comes along, I hope that we, as a community, both residents, elected, and the Sheriff's Department can sit down and figure out what we need to do to get this thing curtailed. Randall, I heard you, and I have your flyer, they did print it out here, so I, I do have it. Juan, thank you for the reminder for, for acknowledging our Sheriff's Department. You're right, we sit up here and we do get the reports, we're used to getting their reports, and we didn't acknowledge them, and we only did acknowledge the ceremony. So thank you for the reminder, and I hope often that the Sheriff's Department hears from me, even though you've heard me tonight complain about them, I want you to understand too, there are, the Sheriff's Department does a fantastic job here in Longdale, and we could not keep the peace if it wasn't for them, and their job is incredibly hard. And so I appreciate you as a resident coming up with that reminder. And Andrew, you are exactly right. Fireworks and alcohol do not go together, and even a safe and sane firework is not safe when alcohol is involved. I've come, I work in, I've worked in an emergency room for a lot of years, I've seen a lot of that damage, so thank you for saying that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney.
Well, you know, I can't like to my left set everything indeed to be said, so I just wanna thank everybody that came out and spoke, and I'll pass it on to Mayor Protem.
Ms. Beresforres.
Good evening, thank you to everybody that came out. I just had one question, and I'm not sure who the appropriate person is to respond to this, but from what I understand, we had the budget for it, but a lot of it comes down to whether or not sheriffs wanna volunteer for the holiday?
Yes, Mayor, Council, that, that's correct. We, we, the Sheriff's Department put out our requests countywide for deputies to participate in the overtime, and we only got so many volunteers, and Sergeant Smith at that time, he had, we started working with him in April, and he started after the parade, Youth Day Parade, and started putting out feelers. Unfortunately, it was very limited who responded.
And I guess the next question would be, is there any other way to outsource the, that work? You know, we outsource, we use the patrol, Southwest Patrol, is there, I, I don't know if that's something we could look into.
We, we can look into all avenues, definitely can look at staff again going out, the civilian side of it. We, you know, staff tended to, we went out last year, this year we let the sheriffs handle it, but certainly we can look at alternatives.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would say that we, we should return to some form of marked vehicles. I know we had the, I mean, undercover vehicles, just like the captain said, when you see the, the marked vehicle coming, they don't, only coming for one thing, you know, to see if someone is discharging or in possession of illegal fireworks. I think one of the reasons why we probably did have more citations is because we did utilize undermarked vehicles as well as staff. So I think we, I think we can have a combination of both. You know, you can have the, the sheriffs there with, with marked vehicles, so there's a presence, right, and people know that the sheriff is actually patrolling, you know, that night, and you're not on your own. Oftentimes, it's feel like during holidays or whatever, city's pretty much on your own. I, I think I've kind of mentioned that a few times, not just the Fourth of July, but I think if we have the, the marked vehicles, then that gives a presence of, of safety, and people know that the, that the sheriff is on patrol, but yet you still have the element of surprise by having the unmarked vehicles, because they're gonna watch the sheriff's car, and they're gonna watch the, the, the car come, vehicle come on the street, and they know when it, when it leaves the street. And perhaps it's gonna do a lap or two or what have you, but by the time the car does a lap or what have you, they probably, you know, discharge, you know, whatever amount of fireworks they could discharge within that amount of time. But they don't know if there's a, you know, if there's a, a beat-up Honda that's coming, you know, right behind, they don't know if that's a, you know, a cop or, and a lot of times they don't even think, "Hey, I wonder if that's a cop." It's just out of, mind out of sight kind of a thing. So if we can revisit that for, for next year, I think that'd do us some service. And also, our, um, our patrol, security patrol unit, I mean, I know they don't do policing or what have you, but it's just like anything else, they can call, call it in, and they have the sheriffs to come, because if you got an incident where you have a, you know, a person that's discharging fireworks for five hours or whatever amount of time, that's enough time to get over there and figure out who's doing it. You know, it's not like they discharged it and, you know, ran, you know, you know, off the scene, that's a little catchy, you know? Becomes a catch them in the act. But if you're stationary and you're doing it for an amount of time, you know, there's no reason why a person in that situation should not receive a citation, because there's enough time for what is the, the, the sheriffs in uniform or staff. So, that's what I have to say on the illegal fireworks. Also, I wanted to mention concerning Metro and Mayor Butts, a motion that was, you know, absent in the minutes? Yes, I'm interested in knowing, you know, why his motion was absent in the minutes. What does that mean? You know, that they were not in the minutes? I don't know. Clearly, he made a motion that was accepted, because we, we were there, he made the motion, so I'm interested in finding out what, you know, what that's about, and, um, does that motion still stand? You know, even though it was not reflected in the minutes, does it still stand? So if we can get a report on that, that would be excellent. And let's see what else I have. Can you tell us about the, um, the four oh five, Mr. City Manager, widened project? It is Caltrans, but I believe Metro is involved in it to some degree as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. The four oh five auxiliary lane expansion project was, went through the process a few years back. The city challenged that project. Metro is the lead or co-lead with, Metro's the NPL, Metropolitan Organization that oversees mass transportation, transportation, all aspects of transportation, my understanding, for Los Angeles County. They're the lead over Caltrans or work with Caltrans on those projects. When we challenged them on the auxiliary lane expansion, Metro was involved as well as Caltrans, luckily, when we finally settled with them. But that does not involve any aspect of the Green Line or Sea Line.
Okay, so essentially, Caltrans is the property owner, but to make it simplified, Caltrans is the property owner and Metro is the developer, if this was a piece of land, right? And so that's where the partnership comes from. Okay. All right, I think that's all I have. I too want to thank everyone who came out and spoke on these items. Thank you so much. Let's move our agenda. Let's see. Where am I? Two agendas going.
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, where is it? Right here, okay. All right, it's right here, okay. All right, we are on the consent calendar. That's... It's item seven up here, and there's something else down here. We are on the consent calendar. What is the, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent?
Our motion to approve.
I'll second.
So the motion's been made by Quivers that we approve the consent calendar as is, and seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. Here we go.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay. Does that go away by itself or just? Yeah, they look, look different. Does this go away by, uh, it doesn't matter. Okay, next item is our quarterly, okay, oh, it's changing as we speak, our quarterly investment report. Let's, let's, let's have the, um...
Thank you. The church is not here today. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Heron's off on vacation, our Finance Director, so I'll take over this report. This is our investment quarterly report for the quarter ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. The information provided by the Finance Director, we have currently in the checking account twenty-three million eighty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars in LEAF, that's our investment, our big, huge investment that we use with the county, that's, we have twenty-four million eight hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in the account, with totaling forty-seven million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That's the percentage of our portfolio, that's seventy-seven percent. In our short-term investments, we have five million three hundred and seventy thousand in our securities, that's about, about eight and a half, eight and point six, eight percent of our portfolio. And in our FDIC accounts, our government securities, CDs, we have over four million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We have two million in securities. And then we also have, in long-term investments, we have two hundred and forty-eight thousand. And US agency securities and bonds, we have two million totaling two million two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. This can, this concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions we may have at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
So, notwithstanding the raw numbers that you gave us, Mr. City Manager, what, what, what the narrative, what is the narrative? What can we derive from?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, I can say, because I sit with the finance director weekly on the investments, we're doing pretty well. Things are looking really good. I do talk to the finance director, we are kind of heavy on our, on our deposit in cash. He'd like to see us invest more, but we have to stay compliant with the council's policies. So, we carefully measure our investments, particularly make sure they're secured. I personally like, and the finance director, we both like the CDs, especially right now because they're secured. Up to $249,000, $250,000 FDIC insured. And then, also, the government bonds are safe havens. But as you know, the Fed has signaled that things may start going, they may start lowering in the fall, so we'll have to see. But the finance director and I are looking around for higher, longer-term CDs so we can take advantage. The only disadvantage I see with those securities, they have call times. Harant and I have talked about this. So, if the interest rate starts going down, they can call it and then call the bond and turn it in. And that's happened to us already, twice. So, I really like the CDs, although we have to put lower amounts and spread the wealth out of the investments of the city. I think, I think overall, we're doing very well. We're bringing in a lot of interest on those, the investments for the city.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Now, I understand you. Yes, ma'am.
I just had a quick question. So, looking at this, how much is cash on hand? So, like if something were to happen, I'm not saying anything, a little bit.
So, cash on hand as of, as the writing of this report is twenty, yeah, checking, $23,827,43.
Okay, so that's the checking accounts.
And that's a good question because that's where the finance director, he thinks we're a little, he's mentioned to me, he feels like we're a little heavy on the cash. We need to keep investing, investing. And also, some of our CDs have become immature, so we need to get them reinvested. But we don't ever want to go over the FDIC insurance. And that's in the council policy as well.
Right. Okay. Any discussion on this item? The quarterly report. Okay, this is a receive and file item, which tells me we don't necessarily need a motion, Mr. City Attorney, correct? Without any objection, we will receive and file the quarterly investment report. Item 8B. Okay, consideration to change the, the wall of the extinction. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason, Minister, Community Services Director. I do not have a presentation for the council tonight, but hopefully you're able to review the report included as attachments. Where the city council approved policy and then samples showing what the current wall of distinction plaques look like and the location over at the community center. You know, briefly, there, you know, I did the research on the current policy. It was focused on posthumous awardees. I know this came before or was asked by staff to bring forward a report considering groups. I think there could be challenges to that, but we are here to take direction from you as a body. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, here we go. Who wants to speak on this item? So, what we're looking for, so just a little way of background, a few years ago, when Councilmember Osborne and myself was on the council, we had a discussion that this kind of flowed out, out of. And although there's individuals here on the wall of the extinction, we didn't put any thought necessarily into what we're looking at now. It's to add organizations, which I think is a good, is a good thing. And that's really the genesis of it, you know, whether or not we should add organizations. Because right now, just allow for like individuals. But you may have some organizations as a whole that may need to be recognized on here, if that's what we wish to do. That's what we're, that's what we're looking at tonight.
Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
The other comment is the committee, since we do not have an active historical society, so trying to figure out.
Right, the, because the historical society was not the only one that could.
The language in the agreement, the policy states that it would be three members from historical society, two from senior.
Yeah.
Unless neither had the full complement, in which case you could take more from one or the other. At this point, I believe we would be taking all five members from the senior advisory committee, which we are, I believe, you know, council has currently been trying to appoint people to that committee so we can have enough for meetings.
I, I do have a question on if we allow groups, how do we make sure that the right groups are there? Because is it something that the committee would decide and bring it up to us or?
They would make recommendations, let's say it was the Optimist Club or something like that, right? They would make those recommendations, just like, same as they would if it was individual.
And they would have to be Longdellians, not a group that some members are from Longdale and the organization meets outside.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, ideally, I mean, these are groups that's contributed to Longdale. Now, it doesn't mean like 100% of their membership have to be from Longdale. But obviously, if they're a quote-unquote Longdale organization, you know what I mean, then, then yes, that would say.
And the.
Let's say, for instance, just trying to, let's say Little League. They're okay.
This is historical.
Yeah. Let's say Girl Scouts. They're not based in Longdale. But they, go ahead.
Active groups or, because, I mean, ideally, we'd like them to still be active.
I think that the group that was in question that night was the Longdale Women's Group, if I'm not mistaken. And they, they were all Longdale residents. And each one of them played a part in an awful lot of the background, both in the school district as well as in the community.
That would be a perfect example.
So, that would, that is the perfect example of why a group would, would be one that would, would perceivably be recognized as a whole group because of the work they did as that group.
I agree. But in the, what do you even call it? Ordnance, it says that they cannot be associated with any commissions, committees or anything like that. So, you said a couple were involved in the school district. If they were on a committee, no.
Were they school? I don't think that they were school, on school.
No, it sounds like.
They were just volunteers, yeah. Both in the school district and here, I don't think any of them held any commissions or, or committees or anything like that.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm good with that, but the five years is kind of way out of whack. Let me say, I'm going to use you for an example, Robert. I nominate, want to nominate you. You, you, you're here, but you passed on. I wait for five years to nominate you. The devil calls me. So, who's going to nominate you, five years? So, the five-year waiting period is way too long. I would either see a one or two years to nominate. You, you shouldn't have to be dead for five years to be nominated.
After the person is deceased.
Yes, uh-huh. And it's five years right now.
The other, and the other question I would have is if you, if the group, say, an organization got on the wall of distinction and there's an individual in the group and most of their contributions are for that, how do you?
I, yeah, I, I, well, I would say just like, you know, if you're, just make an analogy, if you're a recording, a recording group, right? You go solo, you didn't win any Grammys, you didn't win anything, you know, whatever, but you went solo, right? But your significance to the music industry was with that group. That's where you get your recognition from. So, in this case, I think they would already have been recognized as being part of that.
The group.
But what if they did like something else, like, I don't know, maybe they saved someone's life or something and it was, I, I don't know, you know, they did something honorable and it was outside of that service.
It could, I mean, I guess that's what the committee is for, right?
If I could point out, based on the council member's comment, there are at least one member of the women's club with that distinction on her individual plaque. So, I think that there could be some duplicity there. Another concern would be what if, you know, in five years, someone chooses to bring the women's club back and reestablish it here in the city? You know, because of the posthumous nature of it, you know, we're not bringing, you know, individuals back from the dead.
Really.
But a group might be able to resurface and would we want to put a caveat in there about that? Just some of those thoughts to think about.
Yeah, that's true. Because technically, a group can come back 20 years from now.
I do agree though with Pat that maybe the five-year wait time should be considered about dropping it to a lower amount.
I can agree with that. Like two years or so.
Yeah. Because I'll still be here in two years. You'll still be here, Robert, so we're good.
I can agree with that. So, does it sound like we are kind of leaning towards allowing groups and organizations on? And with the caveat, they have to be quote-unquote deceased, I don't know how you do that, with a, with a group, whatever, within two years?
Come on with that.
Or defunct, I guess would be the word, you know, or disbanded.
Disbanded.
Wait, so the group has to be disbanded?
Well, I know, well, that's something we have to discuss because individuals certainly have to be, you know.
Deceased.
Yes, yeah.
Deceased.
And so, if they were all deceased, then it could be disbanded. But then again, it could be like Optimist Club where back in the 50s and 60s, we had. A lot of optimists here. And the Optimist Club lived for, I don't know, the 80s or 90s. But maybe that group from the 50s or 60s is the part that they're trying to honor. So, we've got that issue as well.
You could do it a certain, like, most of them elect officers. You could do it at, I don't know, a certain time year or, but then you could be nominated twice.
Right.
Yeah. Well, so I agree, we, we, we are decreasing to two years, right? And organizations.
That no longer exist.
That no longer exist. And they haven't existed for two years. Is that what we're saying, they haven't existed? Because that's not a long time if it's an organization. Individuals, yeah, because that, that's, I mean, the deceased is deceased.
Maybe it's five years for an organization and two years for a personal.
We want to make sure they don't make a resurgence and they're back on the scene, but now they're on the wall of the extinction after a five-year, a three-year absence. So, let's do it that way. Let's have five years or so for an organization. And then, of course, like two years for individuals.
Two years for individuals.
Can we?
We can do that.
You agree on that?
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think that solves it.
So, we would be just modifying the current policy. Staff will put some language together, add a section in the current policy, making those two changes to the, to the period of time to two years for individuals. And then, we'll put some language in there for five years for groups. Would they be the same size plaque as what's shown in your attachment?
It should be, because I don't think there's any groups that have 14 names in the group.
Well, if we're only listing the group itself with some of the notable accomplishments, you can see just how much space each little plaque has. It's, it's not.
Right, they're the same size because we're not, like I said.
Okay, so we've just been working with the same format on plaques, okay.
Okay. All right, anything else to add? Yes, ma'am. Anyone wants, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I do want to speak. Yeah, I doubt that the Longdale Women's Club will ever come back. They just don't make the women like they did back then. There's no way society with social media will have time to do what these women accomplished for this city. And again, yes, they've, they've been disbanded for a good long time now, they are all gone. It was great knowing all of these women, you know, what they've done. And I think they deserve a plaque. And I don't think you guys are going to have a problem with, might come back and everything. It's not coming back. They, nobody wants to do what they did, you know what I mean? So, please consider the Longdale Women's Club for a plaque. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we've pretty much.
For the, for the second piece that was mentioned with regards to the makeup of the actual review committee, do we want to leave that as is? It still gives us flexibility where we most likely just have five seniors? Or do you want us to make changes to that while we're doing this revision?
I would go with the five seniors right now.
I'm okay with, yeah, the seniors.
We don't know when that stark size is going to come back.
Yeah, I'm okay with the senior advisory.
Okay. But the mayor would not be eligible for the wall as a, as an elected official?
When I came back.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, because I, because I came back.
I came back.
All right, thank you. Okay, next.
Do we have to vote on this?
Do you have to vote on it?
Yeah.
How should we dispose of this? Yeah, directions, yes, ma'am.
Pardon me, for the people at home, you will vote when the policy comes back to officially implement the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of a youth development center conceptional design.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll take that one as well, give me one second. We will pull up a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Although you can do it right here. I think he's queuing it up.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead and, while Jason's queuing up here, I'll go ahead and talk a little bit.
Okay, about a custom field.
On this, on this item, so.
Yes, sir.
Staff, staff's been working with the architect, you know, the council authorized us to move forward. We have four conceptual designs contained in the staff report for you to look at and provide direction. Staff will go through each design and the steps and then some of the challenges we face in terms of costs. As, as the council is well aware, costs have escalated due to, you know, labor as well as materials. So, I just wanted to bring that head up the front and, you know, as we go through the designs with you, as Jason walks you through, we'll go, we'll show you the different concepts. In particular, you know, the existing center, rehabilitating that, where we do some minor changes on the second design. The third design is kind of almost a whole rehab and then a whole tear down to where we're rebuilding the whole center from scratch, which would include also the skate park. And then, phasing in the open space that the council directed to move forward with. And Jason, are you ready to, did we get that item with that guys?
It doesn't look like it's syncing with the display, unfortunately, which can hurt.
Jared, can you hand them the, your staff report so we can, Jared can give you the staff report and we can just do it for an oral.
I got, I got two pages.
I have the report, it's just no presentation.
There's more than two pages. Only two here. Yeah, no, but it's only two pages in the attachment, two of two. And the written one, the paper is more than two. Yeah. Okay, just more than two, so that's, this one is two pages.
Yeah, and then you go to B.
Mr. Mayor, we're having, let's rewind it, we're having some technical difficulties, obviously, we can't get stuff to pop up. So, we'll just have to do, I guess, an oral. And use the staff report, so if we can move forward.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's just go forward with the oral report, Jason.
Yeah, we do the staff report. And we have, we have a written copy here.
We could just go back to the old way.
It works.
But I really liked my presentation.
Was it long?
No, we have, we have an oral copy, so we do it.
All right, well, I'm still going to go through it just because that's how I prepared for tonight. All right, so you're all familiar with the project site location. We are looking at Beeren Avenue, just south of Oro Lane. The, working with the architects, which is BOA Architecture, the contract was approved in March of 2024. Task completed, we're at an internal kickoff meeting, site observations and assessments, measurements, photos were all done by the architect. Community outreach is to be scheduled based on the results of this meeting here. As Sean mentioned, there were four different options prepared. These are all very conceptual in nature. There's no building plans or anything like that at this time. As Sean mentioned, there were four different options prepared, these are all very conceptual in nature, there's no building plans or anything like that at this time. It was giving the city a few different options with which to consider, one for the city council and two for the community outreach portions. So, option A, if you refer to your, the attachments, that makes use of quite a bit of the existing building, it's more of a renovation of that building. It allows for a skate park that is eighty-five hundred feet, keeping a one-story layout, but enclosing the patio that is currently in existence at the, at the facility. Option B is a similar layout, it's a little bit smaller of the, the current building, so it takes, it's a little bit more of the demolition. It only allows for an eight thousand square foot skate park, but it does enclose the current patio as well. Those two options are relatively similar. The third option, option C, is a one-story remodel, it leaves more of the building intact, including the patio, but it pushes the skate park, which is about eighty-two hundred square feet, onto Gravilla, where there's the angled parking on the northbound side. It does take away that parking as part of that design. Option D is more of a demolition of the existing building, and then there would be the addition of a second story. For the additional second story, that would be where the municipal services department and cable TV locations would be, with the teen center taking up most of the first floor, with the exception of the entry stairs and elevator, and then associated supply rooms. That, that does allow for the largest square footage of skate park for that option. Really wish you could see the slides, but, and then if you look at the final sheet, it showed the costs. Those costs do include the corner park, which you don't see in any of your diagrams. The corner park is just on the north side of the street, towards Beeren. That line item of four hundred thousand dollars could either be included in this project, or if funding was scarce due to, you know, you wanting a more expensive option than we currently have funding for, we could push that back to be like a phase two and do something different with that down the road. One other thing to point out, there was the large tree at the corner of Beeren and De Oro, all of the plans allow to, to keep that tree in existence, it would be protected in place for that. One other thing to note, the, based on those costs, they all include a twenty percent contingency, which is a little bit high for a project, but that was what was provided by the, the architect at this point. So, after working with the city council tonight, getting community feedback, I know our grant organizations, most of them allow for a ten percent contingency. I think for things like landscaping and skate parks, sometimes you can get away with five, but the twenty percent is high. So, if we look, you know, at kind of some of these different line items, we might be able to, to establish some savings. But option C was the cheapest, it currently came in just under nine million dollars at eight million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand seven sixty. The second was option A, ten million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, option B at eleven million six hundred sixty-six four hundred. And then option D, the two-story model, was fourteen million four hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Our grant funds do allow for the two-story building, that's how the project was additionally recommended. I hope that helps, but I'm here to answer any questions that council may have or the public.
Okay, thank you for that report. Madam, quick.
The option D, the two-story, you said municipal services and who else would be going upstairs?
The cable, cable television?
Thank you.
And that was D.
And, and that's the option I like.
They both have existing offices in all four models, but...
But I would like to keep our services away from the teen center itself. That was the original plan, I believe, when we first started talking about this, so. If I have my choice, I would like.
If I can ask, just because we know that we have members of the public, if we could keep now for questions and then do comments after the public speaks, I would appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for those. So, let's have any comments from the public, if anyone wants to weigh in on this item, you can do so at this time.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is John Delory. I'm a resident of Longdale, and I've been skating in this area for like two years, specifically the city hall for a couple of years with me and my friends, but I've been skating in the South Bay for like six years. And I just want to share my experience and some input on the skate park. Let's see. So, skating here at the city hall with me and my friends, the two years that I've been skating here, way back like when I was in middle school. The one thing that we did want was, was a skate park to be in here, because we're always in the way of the city hall, people telling us to leave, but there's like no good skate parks. There's a laundry skate park, but that doesn't give us like, it doesn't accommodate entry-level skateboarders, because it's like, it's like a ten stair and like a bunch of other crazy obstacles that not everyone can skate. Like, you can't go there with a new board and like expect to do something cool, because it's hard to skate that park. So, for this skate park, I would just like ask for a small section and a big section for both beginner and intermediate skateboarders. Water fountain, water refill stations, because who doesn't need water when they're out skating and stuff like that? Electrical outlets, because in my experience skateboarding, like, I skate a lot in Gardena, and my friends like to come by with their e-bikes and e-scooters, just staying out with their friends, because it's a little hangout spot. But they can't go inside the gym and charge their vehicles, like here at the library, you can't go inside when it's too late, because kids come by like a little bit later, people want to use the resources and stuff like that. So, I think public outlets would be very beneficial for people to, um, charge their devices and just, you know, charge, charge their stuff. Specifically talking about the skate park, some type of like quarter ramps or transition, because like skate, in terms of skate parks, you need like flow for the park, because if there's no ramps, it's kind of hard to like skate everything. And, um, yeah, the water fountain and the charging outlets and stuff, that goes also for the youth development center, and that's pretty much it. As this park will benefit both the skateboarders and the people here in the city council and the mayor and stuff like that, because it'll encourage others to utilize these resources. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much it, pass it on to my friends here.
Hi.
You're welcome.
I'm Andrew Soto, I live in Hawthorne, but I have attended Longdale School District for the past six years of my life, too, I just graduated. Also, I have some questions about, like, the designs, are you guys going to like have the community like decide on what should be the one? And, like, I think it would really benefit for the teens in this community, because I know there's a lot here in Longdale City, to decide what should go into the teen center. I have a few suggestions myself that I would like to share. One of them specifically, I heard earlier, too, you know, there's a bunch of problems with mental health awareness, especially in teens, too. So, I think it would, we would really benefit from having a type of like counseling or something in the teen center, along with another idea that my friend Ryan is going to bring up in a bit. And also, I know there is a problem with noise in the library sometimes, because, you know, we're young, we want to be loud, we want to be with our friends. So, I think it would also benefit from having a type of like hangout session room, you know, something comfortable that we, you know, live in. For those that stayed until late, because I know there's a lot of kids that stay late here, waiting for their parents to pick them up. And, you know, it would solve the problem of, you know, not having, not being, not, the noise complaints that happen in the library. It would give us all like, you know, a chance to like meet each other, to, you know, get to know everyone there, and, yeah. Now, on to my friend Ryan's idea.
Thank you.
One second, please. Okay, well, hi, Mr. Mayor and council members, thanks for listening to us today, I appreciate seeing the designs a lot closer. But I'm a recent graduate of Longdale High School, and I speak for the artists of the kind of community. So, I was in the Academy of Cinematic Arts, which was very useful at the time, there we kind of had facilities where we had like the Black Box and the CVCA. But those kind of resources were taken from us as students, so the program was very much like limited during my experience. So, I think something like a multifunctional, multifunctional media room within the, the layout of the center would be really helpful to the artists of the community. I think that would consist of, hopefully, I would wish it consists of like cameras, if it consisted of like lighting equipment, of like certain tools that the artists of the community could use to like either hold events in the space, like maybe a screening or like a mini concert, maybe like an art gallery, or even just to have lighting or camera equipment to go in there and shoot things, you know, play around with their own ideas and kind of creative spaces, I think that would help kind of cultivate that, I wish I had that space here. So, yeah, I think that would be wonderful, we could have that in the community, and it would be really useful. I think it's beneficial, because not a lot of kids have access to that, and I know that it is available at some of the schools in the Longdale area, but I think just a space where you can really push your own ideas would be helpful, you know. I, I go to a lot of my friends, some of them are about to be juniors at Longdale High School, some of them are about to be sophomores, but we're always like, oh, we should go shoot this project, or we should go do this. But where are we going to do it, how are we going to do it, you know, outside of school, you know? A lot of us want careers in this, you know, and it's like, to not have those spaces where we can go and pursue our own thoughts and ideas, you know, it makes it hard to, to be able to do that. So, to have our own space, you know, that'd be really cool, and I think it'd be used a lot for events and things like that in the center. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, hi, council member, I'm Ignatius Lynn, longtime resident of Longdale, and I'm here to just add my two cents about the youth center. I definitely agree that there would be very ideal for an opportunity for the community, especially the young people in the community, to give input on the design and the function of the center. And I wonder if there will be a possibility for city to do an outreach and have a public, a way for the public to give input on the various designs, and what they would like, how they would like to use the center. I think, as you can see today, that these young people, just the three of them, but the two of them representing many, many of their peers, everybody have very specific ideas on how this center can benefit the residents of Longdale. You can see there's tremendous hunger for creativity, for wellness, you know, a safe space, you know, for young people to develop themselves and to grow. I also speak as an educator, I am a high school teacher as well, so I interact with young people all the time, and these are some of the common concerns that I hear from young people every day. And this is an opportunity for the city to build something for the young people of, of Longdale. And one more thing on a related matter, I heard that one of the plan talks about having the cable TV and the municipal department in the building. I, I don't have issue one way or another with that, but I would just think anything that, every square footage of every resources that we put into you, that this center should be dedicated to the youth. You know, yes, there will be needs for municipal department, needs for cable TV, they need to be addressed, but whatever is, should be, whatever, everything should be dedicated to the purpose of the youth for this project, in my opinion. So, and I would like to hear more about, you know, the needs of these other departments, and how we can juggle them, and what's the thoughts that this council have on these matters, thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Anyone want to, want to provide some comments before we move forth, or you want to incorporate into your comments?
Can I just share a little bit about the community outreach portion? Currently under the contract of the UA, they are responsible for doing a Saturday dedicated community outreach event at the location, so it'll be on a Saturday. We'll also have the matter open for community input at our Parks Recreation and Social Services Commission, of which, I don't know, if I should out you? He is a, a member of our, of our Parks Commission, and then we are also going to have an input session at our youth advisory committee. We are currently scheduling the youth advisory committee to go to the Norwalk Teen Center, they don't have as much in terms of facility, but they have a lot of great programming ideas through their teen alliance program. And we're also looking at trying to put maybe one or two other stops on that field trip, so they can get a look at what other teen centers are doing as well. So, that's something that we're currently discussing there. I do have my business cards available for the, the gentlemen in the audience, if they want to shoot me an email, I'll make sure that we have their contact info. What we're going to try to do is put together a community outreach schedule with all of the different opportunities to provide input, so that, you know, it's not one at a time, but you'll get a flyer with all the different dates, so you can kind of schedule accordingly. You can come to all of them, you can come to one, we, the only one we may not know right away is when it comes before city council for review, but there's still quite a few steps in this process. But we really want to engage, you know, our residents on, you know, giving their input on mostly the facility at this point, but on programming, because that's going to help play into how it's designed, so, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the, before you... Before you gentlemen leave, I want to thank the three of you for, for coming tonight and coming before the city council to share your views, because this is surely your center. And we want your input, your friends' input, we want the input of the end user, because we want to design it in such a way that it's going to be useful for the, the community, and it's going to fit your needs. So, I want to thank you for bringing up the, the, not just the idea of the skate, skateboard, but the, the division, so that you have the different levels of, of skating, you know, talent or what have you. That's something that probably would have escaped me, I figured one is one size fit all, one level is fit all, but apparently not, so I want to thank you for sharing, sharing that. And obviously, you have the water, the water station, I have an ideal of who we can associate with to get those water refills stations. The West Basin Water District is always looking for opportunities to have water refilling stations. And, but the e-bikes, that's something that, that, that would have just totally escaped me, about having the outlets available to plug in your bike and to charge, that just would have went over me, you know, what have you. I'm sorry, but we, we try not to have a back and, back and forth, because otherwise, we'll, we'll be here ways past your curfew, what's your, what's your curfew? But I, I do want to, uh, thank you, and, and Ryan, you're exactly right, when you, you talk about having screening spaces and opportunities. What's going to make this different from a recreation center is that this is a development center, it's for youth to develop themselves into young professionals. Whether they're, and it's some recreation, obviously skating, if you're not, you know, that's recreation as well as maybe pursuing it as a career. But certainly, like you mentioned, Ryan, about the multimedia center and having the opportunity to shoot, I mean, this is LA, this is, this is Hollywood, you know, that we, we live in, right? And so, to be able to have opportunities like that, that's what we're looking for, this center is to, not to just be a recreation, but also have the, the development. And one of you mentioned about mental, uh, mental health, that's, that's huge, you know, everyone's probably have some youth that's going through some mental situations, that when we were growing up, we didn't get the help that we needed, you know, what have you, for us, they just kind of brushed it off or what have you. You know, but nowadays, we recognize that even, you know, young people need to address their mental health. We do have a new organization here in the city of Longdale that does, uh, mental health for, um, youth, as part of the, the programming services that, that they provide or what have you. But notwithstanding them, that's the kind of programming that we're looking for also to be in the teen center. And you guys are going to help us shape what kind of programs we need, you know, in there, and once we get it built, obviously, we need to have a, like Jason said, we need to have ideal of those, so we can build it to suit, you know, what have you. But that's what's going to drive it, the building of the design, you should say, is what's going to be, how it's going to be utilized in terms of the programming or what have you. So, that's, those are excellent suggestions, and we definitely want to take those advisements, and we want you guys to be involved, we do have the community outreach, just like when we built the, the park, Larry Rudolph Park, that was designed by the community. The youth came out, and they helped design the park, and that's why they have buy-in, you know, because the youth was part of that, you know, it was, it was developed a little different than a lot of the other projects, projects where we kind of develop it, and you either use it or you don't. But in that case, the youth came out, you know, we had workshops and they told us what they want in the park, whatever. We're going to take the same approach with this. So thank you for coming. Anything they want to add before we jump back into the substance?
The Teen Alliance, the Norwalk one, are we allowed, it's going to be open to everybody to visit or just let?
Yeah, so it will be publicly agendized. I'll work at the City Attorney to make sure we do it correctly, but we will be meeting here at the community center and taking one of the city buses. You know, obviously, if, you know, we'd have to, I don't know, I have to work on what happens if 50 people show up for our 20-passenger bus. But we do, you know, need to follow the Brown Act in terms of getting this, the youth to their destination or all their destination. But yeah, we definitely invite the council and, you know, members of the public as well.
And then one other idea, and I don't know the name of it, but I got, someone showed me a post where there's a center somewhere in LA where it actually, for people that don't have resources, you can do stuff, like for me, like I like to sew, I like to crochet, and apparently it's a building that has, I don't know the name of it, I'll find it out, but perhaps that's something we can look in and how they have it set up. And the public can go there and take advantage of the tools and whatnot.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's jump back into the four options we have.
I've been told that the, our, no?
Non-breaking news?
Never mind.
Okay. So Quivers, you mentioned that you like item D.
Item D, yes.
Would you finish on that, with that thought?
Well, I don't think our services should be on the same floor as our teens. We should have two different sections. Maybe make smaller offices upstairs for our services and then give them a bigger layout for their events or whatever is decided.
So in all the designs, and maybe it's hard to see, but there would be separate entrances and they would share a wall, but they would not be walking through the same corridor or using the same restrooms or anything like that. They would be basically two separate buildings joined by a wall. But yes, D was the only two-story option that had them on different floors as well.
And then D would also have a different stairwell entrance? Is that how it?
No, the stairs and elevator would only be for the staff offices. They would be on a separate side of the building, on the beer inside. The teen center entrance would be on the oral side.
And how does it affect the library? Is it affecting their entrance or their little outdoor area?
There's the aisleway in between the two buildings. You know, a part of that would be impacted, but it would not interfere with any of the library circulation. I have been told by library staff that they do utilize the garden over on the Gravella side, and that would be removed during this project. So they were sad to hear that, that the garden might go away.
But could we, and I don't know if it could be done, is set up a smaller garden somewhere, try to fit it in somewhere?
We can definitely try, in part of the landscaped areas. Wait, I can add it to the notes for the architect, for sure.
Thank you.
Then I should, while you guys are warming up.
You go ahead.
I was going to say, I was going to address, someone mentioned about the ideal of using more of the space or as much of the space as possible for teens. And that would be my desire too, but just to give you a little way of background. So this item originally started with a conversation between myself and the then Assemblywoman Autumn Burke, who allocated $4 million in the state budget for it. But in order to get that in the state budget, as a whole bunch of things was being negotiated, by adding, if it was just a teen youth center, it would be questionable if they would have put it in the state budget. But when we said it's going to be a multi, you know, they had a fancy name for it, but basically mean a multi, you know, facility, but dedicated for youth. And so then, of course, you still have to, once they, once we build it and they come through and you do the audits or what have you, it has to be exactly what it was advertised. And that, that's how it got mixed with having municipal services in. Otherwise, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, because it wouldn't have made it to the budget at all. So just to clarify that. I'm in favor of D as well.
I'm in favor of D.
You're in D?
Oh, yeah.
You got D? You're on D?
I'm in favor of D. I feel like, though, and I, and I don't want to offend our skateboarders here, I do think that we should consider, because it's 50% of the of the property will be used. And I'm trying to be the forward thinker of a 50 to 100 years from now. What can, what is usable space? And I would like more input, I guess, from the young skateboarders, as if that really needs to have that much room. Or should we be utilizing more of it in office space? Or usable space for like what the young man said for, you know, the multimedia and stuff, indoor type, type things? So that's where my question is on D, is the proportion of the project.
So all we're doing right now is deciding on the design, now what's going in, correct?
Correct. Mayor, Council, I just want to add the, we don't have the funding for D, so I just want to bring that up as one big thing to mention to the council. We would have to probably scale back a little bit on the building. I talked to Jason and Mike Estes before I left. We, you know, staff feels option D, you know, I know you guys are making your decision. We feel that's the superior option, but it's just the costing. And so what Jason and I looked at it, we're looking at the contingency. It seems too high. So we would scale back. We actually talked about scaling back the skate park a tad, scaling back some of the landscaping and phasing in the open space. And maybe we can get it down closer to where we need to be with what we have. We have like nine, nine, nine million dollars. So we were thinking we could scale it down a little bit. And we all, I mean, staff internally, like option D. Because you start fresh, it's an all-new design, we get to save the big oak tree. So we're happy about that. We don't want the oak tree to get pulled out. And so we were trying to do all we can and maximize the area. And, and also, as Jason pointed out, we still keep the parking on the Gravella side, which is important, because we need to keep that parking. And that, that's why we think that that is probably the more superior design. We're going to have to come up, figure out how to come up with the rest of the money, though. That's one thing. So maybe we could come back and bring something down as we, if we get this all tied, tied in and then go forward. But we definitely think that two and a half million dollars for contingency is too high. So that'll cut it down. And then we think, taking out some of the extra stuff and the option D, we can, we call it, not to scare the council, value engineer it. And I get it down to where it's more manageable on the cost.
And then potentially phasing, like if the north area you wanted to phase. But the difference right now is about $5 million. I don't think we can get it all the way down, but at least if we give the architect direction on, we'd like D, but let's scale it back in these areas. What can we do with that? And then we would be able to come back to you at a later date. We'd have something to show the public, get a lot of great feedback from the community, both young and old. And then, you know, there would be that, that funding conversation that would have to be held, you know, at a later date.
So is that enough direction? Or you need anything greater, Mr. City Attorney, or?
As long as the director and city manager have the direction.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
For the public, if anybody wants to have input on this project, they're welcome to email me or email the officer, call the community center. And we'll get your name on a list that we can use to send out when we get flyers to distribute for the different community meetings. So, you know, again, you're going to have at least three to four opportunities to do it. We'll have a flyer with everything on it. Working with the architect, they will have representatives from their, because the BOA architecture, they don't do skate parks themselves, they sub that out. So Spawn Ranch is a big skate park developer. They will have someone from their team there to interact directly with the skate park option. So it'll be really good community meetings to have for, for skaters and anyone that wants to use the center. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to item B, I mean, 8D, is that 8D?
Yeah, 8D.
Ratify the unanticipated emergency repair. Oh, two public works vehicles.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Proton, Members of the City Council, Ahmad, I'm sorry, interim Director of Public Works, City Engineer. The item before you, it's a, it's a real simple item. On two occasions, two of our vehicles, when they were being serviced and repaired, unanticipated costs of more than $1,000 for each vehicle were incurred. And so vehicle 500, vehicle 502, they incurred cost in the 1,536 and 33 cents. And the other one, 1,811 and 60 cents. As council is aware, city purchasing policy requires triple bidding for anything, any cost, any purchases over $1,000. So that's, that's really the whole purpose of bringing this item to the City Council. Our courageous city manager authorized the repairs. So we went ahead and spent $3,347.93. And we would like to request the City Council to ratify city manager's action tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mayor.
Can you tell us what year both of these vehicles are?
I knew you were going to ask that, and I don't have that information. I'll be happy to get that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, you may remember, you did this a few months ago when the gate broke. And it was originally estimated to be in the $700, $800 range. And when the repair person was in there, it went over $1,000. But it was lying on the ground, and the city manager could either say, go ahead, or, all right, leave everything where it is and we'll go get three quotes. So this is something we're actually looking at the purchasing policy, not so much the ordinance, but the policy, to see if we might bring to you some changes to take care of situations like this, so we don't have to come back for these ratifications. But as for now, it's a pretty straightforward matter. I think the acting director laid it out pretty well. If you have legal questions, I'm here to answer them, but I wanted to give you that background.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
I did one have question. So where are we taking these vehicles? Are we still taking it to Precision Auto, which is a bunch of crooks down there? Are we still taking them?
That's also a good question. I'm not prepared. I'm not sure which automotive they take it, but I can find out. If they're taking it to the crooks or other.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, council, I could add that several of these vehicles are the CNG, last of our fleet, and they're very expensive to repair. And, and it's hard to find people that'll work on them. I know, I've talked to Johnny, our supervisor in Public Works Operations. It's, it's definitely a battle. We are finally retiring some of these vehicles out with the purchase, the authorization, the council letting us purchase new vehicles. But it's a big challenge and they're costly to maintain as well.
If there's another further question, I'll make a motion to ratify the expenditure.
And I'll second it.
So the motion's been made by Kearney, seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the council, please vote. Do I need to change my screen? It doesn't, it doesn't just show up.
No, she's still doing that.
Even from this, this view? Or do I have to be on the home view? Let's see.
Hi.
We're having technical difficulties on the roll call vote. So you, did it come up? Yeah, they did a motion. Oh, wait, hold on one second. We're good.
Yeah, I think I have to get out of this view. Let's see. I wanted to see, do you have to get out of this?
Kearney?
Oh, no, no, you don't. No, yeah. So the answer is no, you don't have to get out of that view. Okay, council, please vote. I was confused by that.
For item number 8D, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Next item. Okay, the next item is approval and authorization to release a request. A portable pressure washer. Oh, wait a minute. I probably hit the wrong one there. Oh, because it popped up right when I was getting it. We're just going through the, through all the prompts, you know, so we'll know the next time. Okay. Approval of a purchase of a portable pressure washer, not to be confused with the other one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proton, Members of the City Council. If you recall, during the budget process, there was $20,000 of ARPA money that Heron set aside for the pressure washer. And I believe one council member, Councilwoman Suarez, mentioned that maybe we would go ahead and purchase this, and then we evaluated it. Didn't have a lot of cost for maintenance, so we decided to punt it to after the first, the fiscal year, and that's where we are. So the current one that we have, it's 18 years old and, you know, not in a very good shape. Staff uses it for bus stops, curbs, gutters, driveways, sidewalks, graffiti. And so now that we are in the new fiscal year, we solicited three bid codes from three companies. The three bids range from $16,852.87 to $21,128.14. The lowest bid was Team X LLC of Signal Hill. And I contacted them. Actually, the bid codes were from a few weeks ago. I contacted them. They honored their low bid of $16,000. And so the, again, the, the funding is coming from ARPA. And we are recommending the City Council to authorize the purchase tonight, so we can go ahead and make the purchase.
Okay, very good. Any, any discussion on this item?
So the, the correct amount is $16,852.87?
That's correct. That's correct.
And that includes the trailer. We're not going to get later on on the rules, say, oh, no, we have, the trailer's extra.
That's, that's including.
This picture we have.
That's including the trailer.
That was going to be my question.
Right, I forgot to mention that.
You fix a car and you find something else different.
Oh, yeah, that is important to know. It comes with the trailer.
If there's not.
Okay, what is the?
A motion to, I'll second.
Okay, so a motion's been made by Quavers, seconded by Suarez. That was on this side. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? Purchase a portable washer.
For item number 8E, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, give it a second. Okay, now here it is. Item 8F, approval and authorization to release the request for bid proposal for a joint city, school, district park irrigation system project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item before you, you know, as you said, has to do with the three joint parks that the city has with the school district. As council is aware, the city has an agreement with the school district for the responsibility of upgrading the, evaluating and upgrading the irrigation system. From the three parks, Roger, Rogers Anderson, Jane Adams, and William Green. As you know, Rogers Adam, Anderson is the worst compared to the other two parks. In May of this year, City Council authorized $1 million from ARPA money for, for this project, for this effort. And at this point, the city intends to initiate a request for a bid proposal. The scope will include assessment of all three parks, design of the irrigation systems, as well as the implementation. And like I said, the majority of the cost, it is likely to be spent. And like I said, the majority of the cost, it is likely to be spent on the Rogers Anderson. The problems that we are having with these irrigation systems are, you know, occasional ruptured pipes, you know, they're not efficient, there's a lot of waste of water. So by, by doing this project, hopefully, everything is gonna be revamped and upgraded so that it would be a benefit to the city, school district, and all the users. And like I said, there's 1 million in ARPA. I'm gonna come back after we get the bids, hopefully good bids, to request approval for the award of the contract. But tonight, we just wanna get the authorization from the city council to release the RFPB. That concludes my staff report.
Mayor, council, I'd like to add as well, please, this is for billing, our obligation as we made with the Landale Elementary School District. We have repaved all the three parks. This is the final installment of the agreement, and finalizing that, once we get an assessment done, then we can move forward with the repairs. And as Ahmad has mentioned, the majority of the repairs, we know William Green's in good shape, Jane Adams, it's Roger Anderson's that may need a lot, the majority of the work. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Of course I have a question. There was no diagrams or anything in here, what needs to be done? I have little concerns about Rogers. Are we doing the football field, the track too? Because that does belong to us. The school district built that. So we shouldn't be paying for their irrigation system in that part. So I need to know if, if that was included in this whole little square we got going here.
I am almost 100% sure that that's not included, you know, so whatever the areas are that are joint, and it is our responsibility, that would be, but, but I will check the bid document before we go out.
Okay.
What point is that?
At Rogers, they have the track and the football field, the soccer field. That was built after this agreement. The school district built that for the middle school. We had nothing to do with that. So I'm, I don't want the city paying for irrigation that doesn't belong to us, we have co-joined, it's theirs.
Mayor, council, we'll follow the agreement. The mayor, the city attorney, when we worked with LASD, inserted the areas of the site plans, and we will follow those that show our area responsibility that we've agreed to with the school district to upgrade. So we will not go outside that area of our, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good. What is, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
A motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion's been made by Quavis, second by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion of approval? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
For item number 8F, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, let's have our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Very good. That's a good report.
Not sauce.
Okay, next item. Support of the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act Initiative.
Do I...
Yeah, we need to, we need to, to be able to, to make it larger.
Okay, so I brought this, so when I first brought this forward, it was just an initiative. It actually has qualified for the ballot. The three main points, as you can see, on the attachments are, it addresses, you know, the smash and grabs, it addresses the accumulative dollar amount to be able to enforce those, and then it also criminalizes, I believe, fentanyl drug dealing, and also a component of individuals that have, I believe, drug use in terms of the unhoused, and giving them an option where that instead of going to jail, they can choose to opt for rehab. So it has qualified, it's Prop 36. The League of Californias has support, is supporting this initiative. Also, Contract Cities voted to support it. I just thought this, and it also across the board, has received very much support from local governments all across California. And so I thought this is something good that we could also choose to support, just to help keep our communities safe and repeal Prop 47 components that I believe were detrimental to our communities. So that's why I brought it forward, and I hope they'll join me in supporting this.
Okay, thank you. I have one question, though. I don't see it here, but I read it in the, on the cumulative amount, which I've always said that it should be a cumulative amount, but my question's on that, and I wasn't clear on it. I know for individual, let's say if an individual steals, you know, one item, and they add all those items together, the value, are they just adding the item of that individual? Or is it what I think it should happen? Let's say you do, you participate in a smash and grab, and you, there's, there's 10 people in the smash and grab. One person steals, let's say something of value of $100, which doesn't trigger, you know, felony. But altogether, the theft altogether is more than 1,000 bucks, right, or whatever, which if an individual did, it would, would trigger a felony. So my question is, would this make now that, which wouldn't be a felony, if they added all the, the value of everyone who participated, and it's over 1,000, $1,000, or whatever triggers a felony, does that trigger the felony? Or does that individual have to steal, steal a certain amount that, that compounds equals $1,000 or greater?
I would probably ask...
Sure, council member, I can help. So if two or more offenders are working together, so actually, it, it requires three or more. So it's, it's the individual plus two or more. So if you have three or more working together, then thefts of the 950 count for all of them. That would be what we would generally describe as organized theft. In addition, when there are losses of 50,000 or more, there's even an enhanced penalty above that. So you have a, a large-scale group that does 50,000, then no matter how much it would divide by with the number of people, you hit that threshold, it's, it's a major issue. So yes, it, it does do what you would like.
So one participant can't argue that what they stole, the value was only 100 bucks, but since you was in on the, the group...
That's correct.
The group is treated as one in terms of the value of the theft.
Yes, as long as, as long as the people prosecuting can prove organization, which they often do through social media ties, or texting, if they can get them on texting, but oftentimes it's social media messaging. If they can prove it, they can, they can, as, as the council member, or as Mayor Protem said, they can bypass Prop 47's restrictions and be able to enforce.
Okay. I'm good, I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
I think it's double kill myself with Contract Cities already putting out their support, and with the league, and we're both part of those. I really feel like this is overkill. I don't think the South Bay Cog necessarily, who is the backer of this, correct, in putting this out? Isn't this the South Bay Cogs here?
No.
No?
No, that was, that's the, that's the, sorry, I'm blanking right now, but that's the, yeah, it's the, the other one.
Okay, it just looks like the same, the same type of...
I think it might be the same information that Contract Cities and the league and all received.
Yeah, so my thought is, is I don't really necessarily, but I'll go, I'd go along with it, but I really don't see, see the necessity, since we already have coverage off of those two other organizations.
Because we're members of the league as well as Contract Cities.
That's correct. We pay a lot for that, to be members of those two organizations, so I, I feel like...
I think, though, it speaks to what we've been experiencing locally. For example, Torrance has had a lot, I think Manhattan Beach local, so I think it kind of just, the more people that you have showing support for it, I think it just, it helps.
I'm okay with the recommendation, so if nobody opposes, I'll motion to approve. And I'll second.
One second, okay. So Quavis, motion, and second by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? All right. You don't have to read that resolution, okay? No, okay, okay, would the council please vote?
For, excuse me, for item 10A, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, one more thing. Can you make sure to update the resolution to actually read Prop 36?
Will do, Mayor Protem, we'll take care of that.
And, okay, the next item on the, oh, speaking of the South Bay Cog, next item on the agenda is the South Bay City Council of Governments. Who wants to lead us?
I brought this forward. I believe last year, this council decided to go with a, using their planner for a nominal fee. I did research, we didn't use that planner at all, so that was a waste of money. And before we go into any contract with the cog, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that amount removed from it, from the billing. And also, I have concerns about this CPI being all-inclusive in this too. But I don't think should be playing for the planner we never used. That was money very poorly spent.
So, and, and to ask the question is, how many times did we reach out to the cog for supplement? Because I think that was one direction I had asked, is if we could find, you know, whether it's looking at research in terms of what other cities do when we bring back, when we're doing, like, the, the meetings, they could, I think I had brought up that they could do some of the legwork in terms of the reports that we put together. So I guess that would be my question, is have we reached out to them?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. For the planning department, we did not use the planner as, when we were directed to use the planner, he actually gave his two weeks' notice and took another job. So from there, it's been about maybe a, a year or less, maybe a few months, and they haven't hired anybody, and I don't know what the status is from the cog right now at hiring someone, someone or finding somebody to actually replace them, but I believe Jackie's the one that's been sending out emails, but they don't have somebody to, to replace that, that planner, so we, we haven't used that resource.
Okay, and then, just to update, in terms of the dues, those were billed in all-inclusive, and there was one other change that happened to the entity, which I think kind of accounts for also having a raise, was the AB5 that required most independent contractors to become redefined as an actual employee. That happened with our organization, so it's no longer Jackie as a contractor, it's actually her as executive director. And as you know, it's a lot more expensive when it comes to that, you have to include benefits and whatnot. And so, that was a component of, of also dues being raised and just being one lump sum. It, it did increase the dues for, for, for that part of it, and that was just something that we could not avoid due to the, the state law.
I just wanna see that, the planner amount removed from our billing, because we're not using it.
So, it's no longer a separate, are you asking for reimbursement for last year's, or are you asking...
This year, going forward.
It's no longer a separate, they voted to make just the dues that total.
And we're stuck with this bill, the, no planner that we're paying for?
It's, they just voted to just do one whole due. I can ask for the specifics, I think we probably should have asked Jackie to come here to clarify some of these questions, but part of the increase also is, has to do with that.
If I believe right, it was you and our councilman Quavis that wanted to do it one year to see if we use it, and we haven't used it, we were under the impression we could take this out of this and not pay for it. So I don't know what the cog is doing, but I, I have, I'm worried about that to be in the gray area charging stuff that we're not using.
Yeah, I can definitely have her come back and talk with regards to that component, but from what I understand, they still do if you reach out, and I don't know what the specifics were with what we reached out, but a lot of cities take advantage of the cog and their staff, and if we haven't been doing that, I mean, it's kind of like paying for a membership and then not, you know.
But if we don't need it, why would we use it? Could you bring that back in? Have we paid this already? Are we still on...
I thought it was approved in the budget.
It is approved in the budget, I have to check. Heron's not here, I'd have to verify if we paid.
Because I'd like to have Jackie come in. I want to re, take it out of this cost, because we're not using it. The rest of the council agrees.
Like anything else, if we don't go after them, they're not gonna come to us. So it's better, it's bet, but we could use other resources that we're not using.
I'm not saying get out of the cog completely, I'm just...
The planner is already set in there, there's, you can remove it, it's just a fixed...
But no, in all fairness, we can ask her to come, I just think it's unfair to have the conversation without having, you know, them also here to answer some of the questions. So if you'd like, we can continue this, and I can definitely have her come and speak to the questions that you have.
Yeah, because I wanna see why they tied this in without letting individual cities decide if they want to keep the planner or not.
They did, they voted as a board, and overwhelmingly, the rest of the members felt that it was a cost worth, that they wanted to see included.
So, City of Landale had no say-so in it. The rest of the city said, "This is what we're doing," so Landale, you absorb the cost.
So there's board of directors meetings, and they, it comes up when we look at the budget, and, you know, just similar to Contract Cities and whatnot, when they bring up their budgets or the league. And so, the rest of the member cities overwhelmingly voted to include that as part of the budget, so that got voted on at a board of directors meeting.
So then it looks like, to me, then maybe Landale doesn't need the cog, because why would we be paying for things that we don't utilize?
Well, again, I think we should have Jackie come here and explain the planner and the fees and whatnot, but, I mean, you could say that about other memberships that we have too, if we wanna look at all of them.
The league, JPIX.
Well, yeah, no, as long as we're utilizing it, it's one thing, but it looks like to me...
Well, there are stuff, though, that we use by the, the, by the South Bay Cities Council of Government. Our Redondo Beach Avenue was well-funded by, through, part of it through the cog, so if you're voting to remove ourselves from that, those are measure and funds that we wouldn't be eligible for. It gets given to the cog, who then the members decide how that gets allocated. We'd be removing ourselves from some of those street improvements and whatnot. But I do hear questions about the planner, I think that's a valid, I do think that's a very valid question, I'd be happy to invite Jackie here.
Please.
Yeah, because it looks like if, if we are utilizing part of it, and again, not getting the planner services and we're paying for it, we, we ought to look at it.
No, I definitely think that's a valid question, but it, you know, I think I'll have Jackie come here, and she can better explain it.
So we'll do that. Okay, all right.
All right, so that was discussion with South Bay Council of Government. Now, we'll wait on it, we're gonna have a discussion of hiring a federal lobbyist.
Yes, I actually asked for this to be put on the agenda. Many years ago, the City of Landale did have a lobbyist in Washington DC that actually worked very well for the city for a number of years. The City of Landale unfortunately had some financial difficulties, and along the way, that had to be put aside, and so we, for many years, have not had anybody representing our interests in either Washington or California, watching out for those opportunities where we could fund different projects within the city. Back in May, I learned that Maxine Waters had just given many different grants for large things, for small things, for vehicle repair, for air conditioning, repair of buildings, just millions of dollars that were given, and it, I asked here at City Hall and was told, we didn't even know that that was coming up. Looking forward and feeling that we've got some upcoming expenses, both with... both with legal in regards to possible metro litigation, to um building a teen center, places where we need to focus some money. And yet, when I look at some of the grant money that is given for different things, maybe this is a way to alleviate some of the expenses that we know are coming up at us. The more I learn about lobbyists, lobbyists aren't just at the federal government, they're also in the state of, of state government as well. So I, I really believe that it's a small investment that could possibly yield large um returns if we utilize them correctly. And my thought would be is, if this council were interested, that we could get something like an RFP going on it, take a look at and see what is offered, it is a council, would the council be interested in a federal lobbyist, with a state lobbyist, with a federal and state lobbyist? What type of things does this council feel that, um, I, I just wanted to know what, what the feeling was here among my peers on if they felt that this was a good idea to consider as maybe a way of implementing or in, in helping out us in budgetary needs so that we can have the extra funds to use for other things that are coming up at us?
Okay.
I have a question. So, we are a small city, is, some of the membership organizations, isn't that part of what they're supposed to be doing for us, is identifying grants and, and whatnot? I guess that, that would be my question is, is, is that what contract cities, part of what they're supposed to be doing in the league for the most part? Because I know, um, like the cog, they'll bring up grants and opportunities that we can, you know, use and how to apply for them, like the water heater replacement, um, even air conditioning units and whatnot. So I guess my question would be is, is, isn't that part of what those other, other memberships?
Well, I think there's also a piece of it is, yes, I think that there is a piece of that built into it. I like the direct di, uh, the direct line to that lobbyist, back and forth to the city. And I also um feel like that they can keep their ear to the metal as to what's going on. For example, and I, I don't know if I can speak about this, Mr. Murphy, maybe you can. One example, can I say something briefly on metro if I'm not talking about metro?
I, I don't know how you can say something about metro without talking about metro.
For example, if, if metro goes and has to get the NEPA and do a federal, start talking about that, that's an extra set of ears that we have knowing what's going on at the federal level on an approval of something like a NEPA that they're going through. Can I say that, or can I ask that?
You just said it.
You said it. As an example of something that a federal lobbyist or, you know, federal, somebody in DC representing the city, as an example of what that person could look out for, I think we're okay, but I think we should stop that discussion now. Thank you for the example.
Yes, that was my example. So I just think that there's different ways that a lobbyist could benefit the city in keeping out Longdale's best interests. And again, where money could possibly be granted, that, I just don't like missed opportunities. And what we just came through in May was a really big missed opportunity to be on the receiving end of some, some money that none of us knew about.
I, I would like to see what the cost is, and if we do decide, we need to make sure we're on top of whoever, you know.
That's my concern.
We, we just can't just sit there and say, okay, we're paying you this much, you know? We need to be on, on top of them. But I, I, I do like the idea, I, I do like the idea of looking into it, how much it's gonna cost. I know the league and the cog, they do help us um with some of the grants, but maybe they have a little bit more in on the federal level.
Yeah, I just, I would just like it, I would just like to know if, if the other council members are interested in getting more information on it, and looking into it.
So my concern is, is exactly what Shirley brought up. You have a lot of these lobbyists who come and they, you know, try and talk, oh, you missed this, you missed that, you missed that. They get in and then it just becomes part of their, you know, they, they rely on, on a, on a nice um monthly whatever billing that they do, and just kind of, you know, every now and then, oh, here, you know, here's something you could do. I, I guess that's my concern about it, um, is, I feel like some of our organization memberships should be really pushing for some stuff. And two, are we actually taking advantage of all the services that those organizations offer? You know, are we having staff attending those meetings, because they'll give briefings and whatnot on, on some of these things? And is it, does it necessarily require a lobbyist to find some of those grants? I mean, I don't know, I think we've gotten federal um grants, so I would like to ask you, the mayor, kind of how those come about.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, you want? Well, before, this week on the council, we had a lobbyist, and he was very good. We went, I believe it was Jim, myself, and Greg went there, and we got money for Rudolph Park, Rudolph Park? Money for the community center, the finish. And where the league and the cog or whoever, contract cities, they focus on many things. A lobbyist focuses on what we're, what we need.
So in this case, are we talking about a specific situation that we're gonna need one, or are we talking about a retainer?
Well, let's say we need more money for the new youth development center.
Yeah, that, you know, I can understand.
You have to have a lobbyist there. And the one we had was fantastic, we couldn't afford him at the time, because everything was getting lean, so we had to cut him loose. But he found stuff that I don't think cog, the league, or contract cities would have found. But he did, and we got the money. So I'm in agreement with Rhonda that we do RFP, to see what the cost is and see who applies.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, I, I, I think we do, in doing our due diligence, can at least look and see what the costs associated with it. I would also, but have that caveat that, having um worked with lobbyists, it's not just here in the City of Longdale, but just in, in my job. All lobbyists are not the same. They purport to do the same thing, but some have different levels of effectiveness. And other lobbyists can give you the feeling that they're really lobbying, you know, and you get these nice glowing reports or what have you. But at the end of the day, it's what's, it's the work product, it's what's being produced. So I would say if we take, took an approach, it would have to be like on a, let's say on a limited basis, where the lobbyists actually show and provide a, provide a, a benef, benefit. Definitely not just an ongoing um retainer, because we had, we had lobbyists before, years and years ago, now this was a state lobbyist. And in my opinion, they went to a lot of meetings, and they went to a lot of meetings, and we got the same report that we got from the contract cities. And so, uh, with, with that, and then what, what I know, I've been working for the legislature, meeting with lobbyists and stuff like that, I, I know how they can bill you for busy work, right? That don't, that's not productive or what have you. But if you have the right lobbyists, and you can quantify that, yes, this, this lobbyist is, because they're not only lobbying the elected officials, um, they also lobby the departments. And that's where the money a lot, time is hidden, within these departments that you've never heard of. You know, um, like in California, when we, we got the, the, the grant for the community center, going back to the community center, that was the natural resources um department. Who would have known that the money would be in the natural resources department? I mean, when you think of natural resources, I guess it makes sense, because you have natural resources for, for parks and recreations, I guess, you have state, on the state level. But the lobbyists, a good lobbyist would be able to, be able to um know about these agencies that, administrative agencies, that you have no idea that actually exist, or what have you. But the trick is, at the end of the day, you have to be able to say, you, you have X amount of time.
That's right, to get it in.
X amount of time to show, otherwise it is just like a retainer, it's like, you know, they're gonna get paid either way. It's like an attorney, like I get paid either way, whether you win or lose. Right? Right? So I would, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I just remember.
I mean, not you, you know, I'm like.
I just remember many years ago that um we were very successful with, Longdale was very successful with working with a lobbyist.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, yeah.
So we can take a look at it and just see what the market will bear, and put some safeguards on it, and say, we're not gonna spend a certain amount, and we're gonna review it within a certain period of time to see if there's real progress. You know?
All right.
Is it a consensus or a vote that we?
I, I think since what we're looking at is sending out an RFP, I think we have consensus to put out an RFP to potential state and federal lobbyists, see what kind of proposals the city gets, bring the range of proposals back to the council to see if any of them fit your needs based on the discussion.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful also to, to kind of guide that RFP to say, like, what, what some of our needs are, that way it's not general, we don't get a generalist. If we can have a lobbyist that they focus on a certain couple of items or what have you, and that fits our need, I think that's better than having a lobbyist that's just a generalist that just basically just go out of, off the general money.
Mayor, Mayor Council, what we can do is, we, we'll bring the RFP back for your review before we send it out, so we make sure it catches all those caveats, authorization to send out the RFP.
Is that, do you have a deal with that? Okay, okay, thank you for that. Only ten items left.
A lot.
The, the next item is, okay, here we go. The next item is item ten D, a discussion of speed humps installation on one hundred and forty-seventh street. So I asked for this item to be put on the agenda, um, to have a discussion about the feasibility of placing speed humps. Or, we, we call it the speed humps, it could be uh speed cushions, might be more appropriate, but we'll use them interchangeably for, for now, on one hundred and forty-seventh street. The reason being, and I understand that at, at some point, maybe two years ago, the traffic committee took a look at it, and they made it a determination that was not favorable. But when you go on one hundred and forty-seventh street, which is right, um, school is right, right there, and of course we have the high school as well, and you see the speed of traffic, which people are accustomed to going um down one hundred and forty-seventh street. You cannot walk away with, from that experience and um without having to understand that we need some type of common, traffic common mechanism, whether it's a humps, cushions, or what have you. And simply posting the signs, the speed limit, you know, um, signs, that's not, that's not happening. We got not just regular drivers driving through there, um, I call them regular drivers, without stopping or whatever. Every, um, I'm not even saying the name of it, you have delivery trucks rolling through without stopping. You know, and without regard for, for people's safety or what have you, and this is all delivery trucks, you know the one. And so I just want to have a discussion on the feasibility of having these speed cushions on it. And I do have, I think, a couple of residents that might wanna chime in if, if they like, um, on this, this item. It's not requiring you don't have to, but if you want to say something on this item, uh, we would love to have your, your input. And this is, and this is limited to one hundred and forty-seventh street.
So Mr. Mayor, I just, I, I have a question, um, and, and the council member brought it up to me. Which portion of one hundred and forty-seventh are we talking about?
We're talking about one hundred and forty-seventh street, starting from, um, is it where?
I was gonna tell you it was gonna start, yeah, all the way to Inglewood.
Okay, so, so if we're, if we're west of essentially City Hall, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Cuevas to recuse herself, because that is.
That is west, yeah.
Right where she lives, and so she's gonna be within five hundred feet, that's her primary residence. And so ma'am, if you wouldn't mind recusing yourself from this, uh, thank you for bringing it to my attention. Based on the, and, and the reason that this didn't come up before now, based on the information in front of me, I wasn't sure whether we were on the east side, where she would be fine, or the west side. So because it's the west, if you wouldn't mind recusing, thank you very much. You can sit here, um, because it's a ownership of real property, and because the addition of speed humps would have a financial, potential financial impact on your real property, you would have the ability to speak in your personal capacity. So you may sit in the, the chamber rather than leaving, thank you very much for asking.
So let me make sure I understand, so you said she has the ability tonight to speak in her personal capacity?
If she wishes to speak.
If she wishes to.
She can, she has the same right, uh, whether it's tonight, or whether you, if you decide after your discussion tonight to direct Public Works to do a study on feasibility, then when that study comes back, we would have the same process. She would recuse, sit in the audience, and have the ability to speak in her personal capacity. And, and I, I will say, just for the benefit of the public, in much the same way that Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman does speak on metro in her personal capacity, because her residence is near one of the options. And once that, uh, once the, the city took a position, uh, she's been required to do that. So um, she has been very good about speaking at appropriate times and leaving it with, this is her personal uh statement, not uh anything as part of the city council. So this is something consistent here, thank you, sir.
Very good, thank you. Anyone want to speak on the side, yes, sir? Yes, sir, that would be lovely.
Hello, my name is Robert, and I live on one hundred and forty-seventh street. I actually live one house west of Lucille Smith Sewell. So I see people running through the stop signs all the time, all day long, I have cameras all around, I loaded them up to the internet for a while. It was Longdale stop sign run, I told the cops, they didn't care. Two years gone by, um, we have residents that are trying to help with this, this is a community, you know, service. Longdale is a community, it's all residents, we don't have any big businesses, we don't have fifty to a hundred employees, businesses here, we have only one McDonald's, we don't generate a lot of revenue, I understand this. Speed bumps are the only way to slow down the drivers, we had cops, cops over there giving tickets, one of the cops got hit. You can sit there twenty-four hours a day and get hit. Longdale is a huge thoroughfare now, is a wide street, because it used to be, Longdale used to be a main street here. This used to be a hundred years ago, the main street, then they made Hawthorne Boulevard, so it's wide on both sides. It's wide over here by Lucille Smith, when the cars come through here, you can't get out of the way, you're in the middle of a freeway. And I, you can't walk, these kids are five years old to eleven years old. So what's happened recently in traffic is, uh, Rosecrans has got backed up, these people come off Inglewood, and they fly down one forty-seventh street to, in lieu of Rosecrans. And they also do the same thing on Marine, they come off Marine and they come down one hundred and forty-seventh street. It's crazy, but speed bumps are great, Torrance uses them, and these rubber ones are awesome, because they're removable. Recyclable rubber, they're removable, piece of cake, easy peasy. So Longdale community service, we get all our revenue from this community, let's save the community. We can do this all up and down here, shouldn't be no problem. And you guys were talking about having money to spend, twenty-three million dollars, spend a little bit. I've been here fifty-nine years in Longdale, my family's been here since the forties, we've been here in Santa Monica since nineteen eighteen. There used to be no stop signs. And, and then one stop sign on one side, and then double stop signs, and then streetlights, I watched it all. But people don't care anymore, they just, I don't know what's going on, um, they just run the stop signs. So I'm done with that, speed bumps, speed bumps, speed bumps. Fireworks, United States of America loves their, uh.
No, let's, let's keep this, let's keep the speed bumps.
Never gonna get rid of that, but.
All right, thank, thank you, sir, thank you, Rob. Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Dustin, I, I live also right here on one forty-seventh, uh, we call it Speedway. You know, I'll be short and sweet here, it's past my bedtime, um, but we, you know. But we, you know, I've lived here for about six years. We have so many schools surrounding us. So every morning coming out, there's children walking all over. You know, our community, a lot of dog walkers, elderly folks that like to walk. And, and it is, it's a wild freeway out there. The speed bumps, I think is the cheap, the most cost-effective way to bring some safety to our neighborhood because we desperately need it. So thank you for your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Spending a lot of money today. Everything's passing, so. Good evening, city council members. My name is Eddie, I live on 147th Street. I'm here this evening to talk about cars running stop signs at high speeds on 147th Street. This is concerning because there are two elementary schools which generate a lot of pedestrian activities, which creates a lot of dangerous environment for our children and the seniors. But I want to talk about the traffic committee meeting back in October, 20, the 20th, 2022. I was told that 147th Street is a collector's street. So I looked it up. Primarily function on a collector's road is to deliver traffic from collective roads to a freeway or expressway. 147th Street isn't a way to connect to the freeway or the expressway. It leads, it deadends at Gravilla Avenue. It's not a collective street. Inglewood Avenue to Condon, the street is wide. Then it gets narrow from Condon to Formona. Then it gets wide from Formona to Gravilla. What information that I have read on, what is a collector's street? This street wasn't engineered for traffic flow to connect to a freeway. It connects to Longdale City Hall. And yes, it has turned into a expressway. I've done all the requirements for Longdale's policy for installing of speed humps, over 50 signatures. And the three Es, education, enforcement, engineer. I also have LA City Fact Sheet policy on speed humps, called LA DOT. I have all the information. So the results from the meeting was education, no speed signs. Well, there was no speed limit signs done. No double lines in the center of the street. No big yellow crosswalk. So enforcement, Sheriff's Department, they've done a good job in enforcing the violators, but they can't be there all the time. And we appreciate their presence.
Time has expired?
Engineer? Engineering, none.
Go ahead and wrap it up for me.
Oh, I'm sorry. But anyway, so I have all these documents and everything. I want to present to you, you can read through them. These are all facts, all about speed humps.
Very good.
And the safety of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Andrew Blackney, and I live on the opposite side of 147th, but I share many of the same sentiments. And I also use 147th, 147th on this side of the street as my main transportation to and from work. And doing that on bicycle is extremely scary on that street, especially if you have to turn on or off that street, which I do. Especially knowing that this street is part of the design that the city is looking at doing for their slow, slow-speed transit network. It would make a great deal of sense to encourage safety on that street by having speed humps or some sort of other speed limiting measure, whether that be reducing the width of the street, maybe putting in some bike lanes there or something to make the street narrower for cars so that they have less ability to speed through. Because if you have a narrower lane, it makes it a lot harder to speed. Doing something like that, doing something, maybe flashing stoplights if the city is disinclined to do any sort of speed humps. And as far as the speed humps that were, the speed humps, speed cushions, whatever you want to talking about, they're not very far from us. They actually just recently installed those in, I believe it's El Camino Village over by Alondra Park. Beautiful design, and the reason those were installed there is for the school, because they want to slow down traffic there because they have two major thoroughfares there, and people like to speed through there to get from Marine to Manhattan Beach Boulevard, I believe it is there. They want to, they have people at speed there. So it's a very similar problem that this, that this area has. And their solution there was to do these speed cushions, the very similar same ones with plastic that are installed that are removable. And so I just asked the city to seriously consider doing that, at least, at least on this side of the street. Hopefully, one day on my side of the street as well, although I understand there's some other issues there with the fire department. So I just really encourage you guys to do that. And it would make me feel much safer as an active user of that street daily, get to and from work, to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Juan Granados. I live on 147th Street, between Condon and Formona. My father bought a duplex there 33 years ago now. When I first moved here, very quiet street, extremely quiet. My friends would say that I live in, it was so quiet that they could see like the deer and bunnies playing around, because I grew up in South Central. Years later now, this is being mentioned, it, it's turning incredibly risky to walk around there with all these vehicles just shooting through there, through those, especially through that one stops between Fur and, oh yeah, Fur, Formona. Where I've been with my father walking and seen these cars just pretend that that stop isn't there and just take it. And it's very dangerous, because I've told my father, just keep going straight, don't try to take the, you know, don't try to take those, those, those stops, just, just keep going towards the, the same, follow the same path, basically. The other day, early in the morning, when I was coming back from visiting a friend, I saw a truck coming without its lights, just taking all the stops, all the way to Inglewood. And just barely stopping enough to make its right turn onto Inglewood Avenue. That's how, that's how dangerous it has become on that block. And one day, somebody will be hit. Somebody will probably lose their lives, or a limb or something. Obviously, a few years back, somebody was rolling so fast that they hit my neighbor's car so hard that it just totaled it, and that car kept going. The thing is that the police found him because he left a trail of oil. And he was going towards, he went down Fur or Formona, like I said, towards the school, and they found the car, the vehicle there. And there, you know, everybody was happy that they found that man who did that. That was a few years ago. Now it's gotten worse than that, because now it's, you know, both ways. And our street is very narrow where I live. Something to think about, maybe cameras? If you guys want to put speed bumps, maybe some cameras? I went to Ohio once, and I saw they have cameras everywhere. And I'm thinking, hey, this is great. Because if something does happen, they can actually see the person and the people, and they can catch whoever that is. And I guess it would be more money for the city, and a little bit more quieter, and more easier, you know. No, no life loss.
Time's expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone who spoke on that item. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Oh, okay. So I'm gonna ask the city attorney, you kind of alluded to it already. As far as tonight is concerned, what are our options? I know you said, you mentioned study. I'm not inclined for a study, to be honest, because I did read the information that was provided from the committee two years ago, and it hasn't gotten any, you know, any better since the two years ago. So I would be interested to know, at least, what are, what are our options?
Well, I, I don't know what the committee had in front of it, but one of the study options, one of the things that would need to be looked at whenever putting in speed humps is if it's not just warranted by traffic conditions, but if it's technically actually allowable. There are requirements, and I can just give you a very simple example. Years ago, when we were renting a house on a fairly busy street, they put in speed humps, City of Pasadena did. But they had to skip one entire block because the way that the driveways were on that block lined up, and speed humps have to be a certain distance from each side of a driveway. And so that entire block couldn't have any because there was nowhere on that block where the driveways, as they alternated east and west, gave enough space. So if you are looking to do this, then one of the things that you would do, as you said, the study's been done as to the traffic part, but you would want your Public Works engineering team to see, what's the feasibility? How many would you actually get in there? And do they think that they, what you would be able to fit from a technical perspective would be sufficient to actually kind of help solve the problem? And then also maybe get some cost estimates as to what you're looking at, what the different options are in terms of asphalt versus the rubberized that's been discussed tonight. Anything I'm missing, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Greg. I think it summarized it pretty well. I, I was at that 2022 Traffic Safety Committee. I believe it was September 20th, if I'm not mistaken, not October, but it was, it could be. The, the City of Longdale, as council may or may not know, has a speed home policy, you know, already in place. This speed home policy was adopted in 1996, February 26th of 1996. So I, I read through it, I have been reading through it. There is some good information, there is some sensible engineering procedures, you know, which is consistent with the current practices. However, some information probably needs to be updated. Our firm does a lot of studies of speed humps in number of cities across Southern California. And, you know, as city attorney mentioned, there is a lot of study and engineering with respect to the traffic conditions, the geometrics, the classification of the road, you know, all of those that goes into, you know, the traffic calming that might lead into speed humps. Speed humps, whether they're permanent asphalt, you know, the 12-foot wide, you know, that gradually goes up to a height of probably four to six inches in the center, or the mountable ones that are rubber. They do serve a purpose, but generally speaking, they're the last option, you know, to do traffic calming. The very first thing to do is to have a traffic engineer to study the area. And the resident that mentioned the three Es, you know, he's 100% correct. Education, engineering, and enforcement. I think all those three Es have to work hand in hand in order to make a particular roadway safe. I'm not sure if the City of Longdale has any existing speed humps, you know, anywhere. It is kind of interesting to me that the policy was adopted in 1996, and ever since that time, there's, I haven't seen any single speed home in the city. So there, there has to be a reason for that. You know, perhaps over the years, whoever the traffic engineer was in the city, they probably considered other options, you know, to, to do the traffic calming. One option, and you know, of course, you know, some councils, some cities, you know, like it, some don't, is lane diet or road diet. You know, it can easily be accomplished with striping. You know, you introduce bike lanes, and the street won't look like a bowling alley, you know, where attracts a lot of drivers, you know, to go fast. But, but back to what the city attorney was mentioning, I think the best thing is, is to do a comprehensive study on the west side of the 147th. The road width, roadway width, the speed limit, the 85th percentile. You know, all of those criterias need to be checked off, you know, in order to make sure that that roadway is A, a candidate for the speed home, and B, what other options might be out there to do the traffic calming? Because, you know, keep in mind that the speed humps, especially the permanent ones, you know, if it goes in front of somebody's house, it devalues the property. You know, in case of emergency response, you know, it might cause problems. But, but there are other ways, you know, to do the traffic. I'm sorry if I got a little catty-dawdly.
No, no, that was, that was good. So we were going over like the, the steps, Mr. City Manager, Attorney, in terms of the legal steps, if we desire to have the cushions. Let's have a question.
Yeah, I would say that, that the step right now would be to direct, to direct staff to maybe update the study that was done for the traffic committee. Doesn't have to start fresh, but update that to make sure that it meets any requirements that they have. To review the engineering options for speed humps in that area. And then to provide alternatives to speed humps so that the council would have an idea of whether speed humps or some alternative are preferred from an engineering perspective. But sometimes the engineering preferred or the legal preferred is not the council preferred. So, you know, bring all of that information back for further discussion so that we can help inform you on sort of what our viewpoint is, but the five, or the four of you can make a final decision.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and just for clarification purposes, the results in terms of what the recommendations were in 2022?
I don't know. Were there any results that were denied?
They were denied, but there was no further recommendation for traffic calming?
It, it was denied, as I recall, and, you know, the minutes are all available. We can provide to the city council. But from what I recall, the speed humps were not preferred, you know, only because there hadn't been any study done on this street. 147th, definitely east of, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, east of Hawthorne, and to a certain extent, on the west side, functions as a local collector. Only because, you know, there are some sections of it that are, that is wide. The resident is, is correct. Between Formona and Condon, it's narrower. And then there is a narrow section west of Condon, and then it gets wide. One of the criteria, I mean, I just want to give council an example. If, if a roadway is 40 feet wide or more, it's a no-no. You know, it's, it's an immediate no-no as a candidate for a speed home. You know, so I, I'm not exactly sure. I know that the east. I know that the east 147th is definitely wide, you know, you have two lanes in each direction. But the west side, you know, needs to be studied. And the outcome of the traffic committee at that time was to put the Continental crosswalks on the east 147th, which I don't know why it took so long, now it's done. And the marching order from the traffic committee was not to do the speed humps, but do a study. You know, so we already have that direction from the traffic safety to, and I believe you may have been present at one of those meetings, Bernard.
Which doesn't sound like the study was ever.
That's what I was trying to understand, that if the speed humps were denied, what was the recommendation, because something still needed to be done about?
Correct, correct. And that was contingent upon a traffic engineer doing an analysis. And I think we need to speed that up to find out what options we have.
So that's the same as what the attorney was saying, update the traffic committee study? Are we saying, we're saying the same thing essentially, right?
Correct.
Update the traffic committee study, right? And so that may reveal that, that speed humps nor cushions is appropriate, but here's some other alternatives that could get you to your goal.
Correct, there could be alternatives, but contingent upon a traffic study by a traffic engineer, which I think it's a first step.
So it sounds like the city attorney said three things, I missed one. One was update the traffic committee study, then the other one is to provide alternative to speed humps, but that would be revealed in the study, right? And there was a third one you.
The third was to study, engineering-wise, study the feasibility of how would speed humps actually be rolled out along this street? Where, would there be, to use the example I gave, would there be gaps? Because a block or three-quarters of a block, the, it, you can't meet the technical requirements for putting them there. So as part of studying, we don't just want to study existing conditions. To give you a good sense of the alternatives, you need to know, are speed humps going to be able to be kind of rolled out in a sort of regular pattern? Or are you gonna have gaps? Because if you have gaps, they might not be as good a resolution as one of the alternatives, where if they're, you know, able to be put close enough together, maybe they're the best resolution. But we wouldn't know that without the engineering.
So, and thank you for putting that succinctly there, as the city attorney, because I think that's exactly what, what we should do at this phase to keep this project going, so we can get some resolution, some traffic calming, whatever it happens to be. So I'm gonna ask that if the council, if the council's on board that we instruct the director of staff to do the three things that was outlined by the city attorney. Thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, 10 more to go. Next, okay, next item, let me introduce it. Let her get her seat. Okay, the next item is a discussion of Johnson versus Grants, Good Neighbor Pledge.
So I'll take this one. At my last steering committee with the South Bay Cities Council of Government, we talked about Johnson versus Grants' past Supreme Court ruling. The court, the courts held that local government ordinances with civil and criminal penalties for camping on public land do not constitute cruel and unusual punishment of homeless people. So the COG wanted to just affirm, and there's a letter attached with it. Basically, they wanted to take it to a vote with the entire board. There's nothing, and we're allowed to amend the verbiage in that letter, but it's basically just to reaffirm the pledge, you know, to still try to resolve, you know, the issue of homelessness and trying to find those individuals housing and whatnot. So, and it did come up in the discussion by several cities, because they're in the process of, it doesn't preclude us from enforce, you know. We're not saying that we will not enforce local ordinances with regards to that, or, you know, coming up with an ordinance, but it was just to reaffirm our commitment. And so the letter is there, they want to take it for a vote, but they did want all the cities to approve it and possibly even vote to support it as well. And there was a few, let me just make sure to see, because there were some, there were some attorneys in the room, actually, council members that, I think, had some revisions with regards to our responsibility. But I think, oh, they removed it, okay, because there were some other. Yeah, okay, so they did revise it. So I just wanted to look, there's nothing that really holds us, you know, that we're going above and beyond what we're already doing for the most part.
I guess for me, I was, I was trying to, I mean, I know it's a pledge, but I was trying to figure out the necessity of such. And does that put us in any precarious position that we may find that we don't really want to be in? Although I do, when it comes to the court decision, some would say that, you know, it's, you know, criminalizing being homeless. And we certainly don't want to, at least from my standpoint, being one that was previously, let's say, house challenged, would want to criminalize the, you know, folks for being homeless. But at the same time, I think what this has done is the decision has given the cities, if they use it fairly, tools that we didn't have. Because you do have people that are homeless, and they would not avail themselves of services, and they will sleep in the public right away or what have you. And the greatest, at least from my standpoint, deterrent to sleeping in the public right away, when you, when you do have alternatives, and I don't say that lightheartedly, have alternatives, is to perhaps go into jail. No one wants to go to jail. But because people, and I'm not talking about, you know, folks that suffer mental illness or what have you. If you go into some communities, you know, you will see, obviously, you'll see a certain amount of homeless population that have mental challenges. There's also another segment of population, they don't have mental challenges, they're homeless, they don't have necessarily mental challenges or what have you. So I'm speaking to that population. You have to have deterrent, you know, because if you're somewhat, you know, somewhat there, but decide that you're gonna take up space in the public right away, what is that for the community? I think this gives us a tool to say, hey, either you avail yourself of service, or you move along, or you're gonna have to get a fine or whatever this court decision will, you know, allow. Because other than that, you might decide, hey, this is prime real estate. I'm gonna stay here under this bridge, under this overpass, or what have you, even though I don't have any mental illness or whatever, but, and I could do something else. I could, could find another location that's not in the public right away, that's not impeding the public right away, or what have you. So it's kind of a quandary, find ourselves in. So I just want to make sure that this doesn't put us in those type of positions to where we're basically saying, even though the, even though the court says that we can address it, that we're not, because we just feel that they should be able to sleep wherever.
And that specific question came up, and, and the COG was like, no, we are not saying that. And it doesn't include it in the letter. The other thing I might want to add is apparently the LA Times were asking, you know, what are the city's responses? And that's kind of what this letter is a response to. I guess that's come out, but, you know, we're still committed to. So it was a bit of a publicity thing too as well, what our take on was it as a region?
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone?
The way I see this letter is we are doing most of the things that this letter says. We have the homeless committee. We are trying to help them out, you know, get homes. We're not just saying, move away, we don't want you here. So that's how I read this, is saying, we're committed, we're gonna continue to do what we are currently doing.
So they were just asking for feedback, because they do want to bring it to the board, and they wanted to have a unified response, so that when they can let the LA Times know, you know, as a region, this is, you know, what we're committed to.
And I have to agree with you, Robert, on this. I mean, if we're doing the stuff already, we don't have to fix City of Landale's name to this letter from the COG, if we're doing it already.
Well, that's the other.
But the LA Times is gonna be asking what cities are committing to this, and are, do we want the publicity where it says, well, Landale doesn't want to?
Why would it, let's say, if we're already doing the, without this, why would it be publicity? We're doing this. We don't have to sign, affix our name to a COG letter.
I disagree. We, we are committing to.
We're just reaffirming.
Reaffirming that we're doing it.
It's a response to, you know, how these cities feel.
We can't tell the LA Times that we're doing it? We have to fix our name to a COG letter?
So your issue isn't with the letter, it's with the COG in this case?
No, my issue is, we're already doing it, why was this even presented to us?
Because they had asked.
Because COG wants.
Well, they wanted us to come and they, you know, as a region, but they didn't, they didn't want to have the vote, and then, you know, it fails, and then the Times is, you know, it's on the radar that we're not united as a region, so.
I mean, you're right, I mean, if you read the, the letter on its face, it does not, you know, commit us to, to anything.
And we're welcome also to revise it too.
What other cities besides, cities in the South Bay have signed on to such a pledge?
They haven't, because they wanted us to talk about it before they brought it before, so that it didn't, you know, come before. So it's supposed to go to our board for vote.
Do we know if any cities outside the South Bay COG, like in maybe other COGs or whatever?
I don't know.
Because I don't know if the City of LA has signed on to something like this or not. Oh, obviously, they're part of our COG as well.
Oh, yes, that's right, there's.
Yeah, yeah, they're part of a few COGs, I'm sure.
Well, can't we wait till we find out what are the cities signing on before we sign on?
Well, I would basically go to a vote for the board, and I'd have to vote on it.
When?
I think they wanted to bring this in August, so. I guess I, what is the issue with the letter, if there is one?
Well, I don't have, like I said, reading the letter on it, on it, on its face, I don't have any, you know, any problem with it if it's not signing us up for, to do anything that we're not already doing, or any obligations.
I would ask our attorney too, if there's anything in the letter that specifically, for me, it was a feel-good kind of, you know, response.
It generally looks like it, that's the intent. The two items that I could say could be viewed by somebody, not me, but by somebody as creating obligations on the part of the city. The third bullet point on continue our investments, we commit to continue investing in solutions to solve and prevent homelessness, that could be taken a lot of different ways. I believe that the intent is, as you said, ma'am, a feel-good, we're going to keep working hard. But that, that could be taken different ways.
Well, you could be talking not monetarily.
Absolutely.
Talking, you know.
Time, yes.
So I guess legally, is there anything that obligates us?
No, that, that does not, legally, that does not, but that was one, that was one item that I saw as an obligation. The other is the, and it's in all caps, so it kind of stood out. "No later than December 31st, 2024, we commit to training city personnel and contractors to educate them as to resources available." I, I believe, my understanding is that's something that the city manager and the director of municipal services have already done, but I would want to be sure that he feels comfortable with that, so that he knows that, that yes, we've already met that obligation, so it's not actually creating some new obligation on him and his staff.
So they did talk about, for smaller cities specifically, providing, I think, extra support in terms of training and whatnot. I don't know what that looks like, I'd had to ask that question. If you'd like, I, we can remove the December 31st, because I don't know if that's feasible, you know.
Yeah, and I, I think honestly, that, that would be, that would be my recommendation, just legally speaking. The only thing that I truly feel creates an obligation is that line right there. So if we just said, as soon as practicable, we commit to training city personnel, I think we're covered. And then I do think the rest of it is fuzzy or flexible enough that you're not committing, you're not committing city funds. As you said, investing in solutions can be an investment of time, can be an investment of, you know, dedication. There are lots of different ways to put that. So, no, I don't believe there are other obligations created by this.
I can definitely ask for that removal.
And let me ask you one thing, Mr. City Attorney. So, and I appreciate that, that explanation. Do this in any way tie us, our ability, or handicap our ability to use, in the event that we have to? I guess, what word they used here, that they use incarceration? They didn't use incarceration, but... There's a word that they use here.
No, it's.
Basics.
And you know what?
The threat of incarceration.
Yeah, we, we retain that option. And what I would say is, if you look at the second bullet point, "We commit to an approach that offers services and shelters a cornerstone of our strategy." City manager has done that consistently. "Recognizing controversial history of sweeps, we pledge not to engage in practices that simply move individuals from one member city street to another." As soon as this decision came out, the response from most of the cities that I and my colleagues work with was, this is wonderful, because we can do not a sweep of get out, get out, get out, but some of what's been talked about tonight. Going into an underpass where people had defied offers of service, because they knew that under the previous case, the Boise case, you couldn't move them. And so those became, for lack of better terms, open-air drug dens. They became very harmful to other members of the community and to the people that were living there. So those could be swept, but the sweep wasn't just get out. The sweep was, you have to move so we can clean this place up. And then if you come back, you know, let's talk about how to come back. Let's talk about what services are available. It really is, as the mayor pro tem said, made public areas like that less attractive, and people will be looking to be in places that, where they don't have the same kind of impact on other members of the public, or frankly, on the more vulnerable members of the homeless community, who oftentimes are the ones who, who really are the most harmed by the people that you talked about. So the ones who simply don't want to follow rules, don't want to live in a normal society, they tend to prey on the mentally ill. They tend to prey on the homeless mother with children, who's just trying to get back on her feet, because that's the lifestyle that they've chosen. And this, number two, the way it's laid out, or the second bullet point, the way it's laid out, it doesn't stop you from taking action against those people. It just says, the purpose or the focus of your sweeps isn't going to be, we have a camp, get them out of our city and move them next door to unincorporate it. It'll be, we have a problem with this encampment, we need to get rid of it, because it's harmful. And so you have, you have the authority you need.
And from what I understand, Redondo Beach, their attorney drafted this.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, you know, that makes me feel, you know, a little better, because I know in the city I work in, that, that's part of the problem, that they take up. Cause I know in the, the city I work in, that, that's part of the problem, that, that they take up, you know, um, under overpass or what have you. And next thing you know, you got, you know, a little city and they're not able to get them out. You know, what have you, um, but now if they're able to get them out, I didn't wanna undo essentially what the court has allowed us to do. And of course, being sensitive and all that kinda stuff, but we're talking about those who just decided just not gonna move. Any other comments on this item?
No, just, just, it's gonna come up for, I, I, I thought, just wanna get your feedback, but I thought it was okay to, um, vote, um, when it comes to the board.
Yeah.
So if we don't vote and it goes through, we're still part of this good neighbor, uh, document?
If it passes.
If it passes with the majority.
Well, I mean, your vote shows, you know, something contrary, but
Right, but if it, if it passes, we're still part of, of this.
Well, yeah, but
I guess we're doing it already.
Being a member of COG.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll just ask for that to be revised then, the date. But I appreciate the input.
Okay, everybody good, huh?
Deuce.
Okay.
Deuces.
All right, thank you. Only ten more to go. There you go. Okay, the next item is some items from the mayor and city council. Any reports of attendance, anything you wanna share? Let's start with Ms. Quavis.
Since our last meeting, I attended our Neighborhood Watch meeting, which was well-attended. We had, uh, more residents join us, especially from the west side of
From Speedway.
The Speedway area. So hopefully on our next one, we could add additional, uh, residents from the east side of the Speedway. Not so much the west side of the Speedway. I also attended the SMOA chalk art event that was held in front of, uh, City Hall in the plaza. Nice little chalky signs. They were supposed to be water drops, but someone did a, um, clover. Very nice green clover.
Very nice clover.
Uh-huh. So that was a, a good event out there and thanks for SMOA, uh, museum too, putting that together. I have a question, actually two things, um, regarding fireworks. Could we put together a budget for a firework display? Like we used to in the old days and see if that will bring our regular illegal fireworks down? And also, is there a way to put a committee together that could work with the sheriff department and come up with solutions on how to bring down the illegal fireworks?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we can, uh, look at that, you know, we have, you know, the suppression funds left over, so we can look at that and bring an item back to the council for consideration for, uh, I think we used to do it at Losinger. It was done at Losinger years back. We can, other cities are doing the fireworks. We could look at that as well as commencing a, a committee, um, to work with the council, an ad hoc maybe? Bring an item back for an ad hoc and then sit down with the sheriff to see what would be the best solutions.
Yeah, and, and it doesn't, it could be a drone show too. You know, a lot of cities are going away from the fireworks, but it, we, maybe, I don't know if it's cost-effective, but maybe a drone show.
We could look at alternatives and bring it to the council for consideration. I, I'd have to check with Mr. Reyes to see if we can use, and the city attorneys, that suppression funds will be helped. We can use those fines towards that effort to help reduce fire, people buying the illegal fireworks.
It, it, I think if we keep them busy on Fourth of July, we'll have less illegal fireworks in the city, if, if we do something.
If the council decides to do the fireworks show, I'd like to be in charge of the fireworks.
I don't know where you're gonna do it because all of the high schools have artificial grass now. They won't allow it there. You can't shoot fireworks off in the school district parks. So, uh,
Unless it's a drone.
Maybe on top of the sheriff building on Prairie, we could do it.
And remember too, the reason it stopped was not over finances. It grew too large and it became
Yeah, it got out of hand.
It got out of hand and it became scary. In the first years, we sat only in the bleachers and as it grew, the electeds all had to sit down on the grass. And then next thing we knew, there, there was residents down on the grass with us as well. And it just grew to a scary situation.
And then all the streets surrounding Losinger
Became a problem.
Rosecrans, double parking on Rosecrans.
Yeah, that was a mess.
And all the side streets, before your time, Bernard, okay?
But we'll, we'll definitely, staff, staff will look into it. And if the council decides to do a pyrotechnic show, you know, I'll volunteer to light them.
No, no, you have to be a licensed dude.
Oh, he's gonna go get the license for another, so he can get on his wall.
If, if, if we can't do that, at least put a, a committee together that could come up with ideas on how to deal with, with all this.
Most definitely, we'll bring an item back for the council to consider with alternatives and then, uh, look at those options. And I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Reyes about that.
Thank you.
As well as the, uh, ad hoc committee to get together, work with the sheriffs with some more mitigations for fireworks suppression.
And my last thing is, um, is there an agency that could work with the city on those people that have issues, mental issues? Like, there's certain cities that in their community centers, they have someone that comes in once a week. And they speak to
I, I
Like a social service, thank you.
Yeah, I planned on following up with the sheriff's department. It sounds like there's an issue out there.
It's a big, it's a big
Lieutenant Osborne's right here.
It's a big issue.
And I'm sure they have somebody on their teams that they can recommend. And we can get the county of Los Angeles in here, mental health services, and we can get that person some services.
Well, she was taken in because she, we, we called twice on her.
We can definitely look into that.
She's actually my next-door neighbor.
Oh, well, we can definitely look into that and, um, update the council once we meet with the sheriffs and figure out what, what kinda intervention services will be necessary to work with.
Well, not only for her, it's for anyone in the community that feels, you know, that they need assistance. If, maybe we could offer, once a week, someone in the community service.
We'll look in, we'll look into that, that's, I'll put that, I put that down too.
Thank you.
Hoffman Gorman.
So I would be interested in being on that ad hoc committee meeting about fireworks. And to add what she said also, the question in the community that I got asked several times this week, speaking of fireworks, is can we utilize reserve officers to spread our deputies further? When it comes to, so there's a lot of questions out there that I think an ad hoc committee would be a great place to start. All right, unfortunately, I forgot my calendar at home. From the best of my memory, I also attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting. We did try to have it in the af- oh, excuse me. That was Coffee with the Cop. Neighborhood Watch, I did attend and it was well-attended. In fact, I was surprised how large the group had become. And so, um, I look forward to it continuing to grow. And we're going to outgrow that room that we met in and have to go upstairs to the bigger room, it looks like. I also attended the city, um, In-N-Out event for, um, employees. And that was a, a fun thing to see our city manager in a dunk tank, but we'll leave it at that.
Yes, he's a clown.
I attended two California Contract Cities Legislative Committee meetings. And I attended the Coffee with the Cop event, uh, that was held in the afternoon. And sadly to say, we didn't have as good a turnout as what we had been having when having it in the morning. So I was kinda sad about that. It was nice having it over at the garden shop, but, um, sadly, I was disappointed in the number of people that attended. I also attended, um, the West Basin Water Education Event that, um, West Basin put on here the other night. It was very well-attended by community. There is a couple electeds there, but it was, um, a good, good education night. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I have a list.
You have a list?
Uh, I attended the Fourth of July Senior Luncheon. The mayor and I and several of my guests were there, well-received. I did attend the Coffee with the Cop and I agree with Rhonda. The afternoon was kinda shaky. I think we should do morning because, you know, us seniors go to bed at four o'clock. So we, we're in bed by four o'clock. Right, LT? You know what I'm talking about? I also attended the, uh, I call it the Eskimo Chalk Away Event. It was, I had a great time. Yes, and I did the Shamrock. Uh, I did, attended the employee appreciation luncheon where our city manager dressed like a clown. And he got in the dunk tank and some people were dunking him illegally. I trusted the Lobby Trust Oversight Committee in Monterey Park and he had to pay out some funds again. And then I attended the LA County West Vector, the bug company. And I guess there were, uh, West Nile mosquitoes in San Gabriel now. And then I believe Orange County has contract, subcontracted some West Nile. But we're good here because I walk with my wagon, where's where that, with my wagon? And I spray the city, bug spray, okay? And with that, I'll pass it on to the Mayor Protem.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting. It was a lot more, uh, there were a lot more residents than the first one, so it seems to be growing, that's great. And then the chalk event put on by SMOA. There's a nice video too that was done, um, that shows really nice pictures, some of them. You can see like from an aerial view, like the, the whole, the logo and all that, so it was really nice. And then I attended the South Bay Cities Council of Government Steering Committee. That was last Monday and also their legislative briefing, which was that following Thursday. And, um, one item to bring up is they did go over the homeless count and overall, as a region, it decreased by, I think, nine percent. I can't remember the exact numbers, but I wanna say Longdale's went from sixty-three to forty. But the interesting note that they gave, cause they showed us the stats, is, um, although the overall amount decreased, cause they have, uh, the, there seems to be an influx though. So it's not decreasing the numbers in terms of unhoused, it stayed the same. So it seems like we're getting influx from other regions and whatnot, which I think we're aware of, but that was noted. And, um, that's all I had for that, that's all.
Okay, thank you. So I also attended the, uh, the seniors, um, July Fourth, um, luncheon. That was a, a good lunch. I attended the Neighborhood Watch, uh, meeting, and yes, that was, that's, I'm growing, it was a very good meeting. The SMOA event, um, that was the first time having a chalk event. They look forward to doing it again next year. Um, it was actually, um, pretty good. And did you see that I won an award for, for my contribution?
What was that?
The one that I, I did.
What was it?
It was the ladybug.
It doesn't matter what it was, I won an award for it. Of course, I
You paid for your own award, right?
Of course, I gave it to myself. You couldn't, you couldn't make heads or tails of what they, what they, but somebody came and they kinda doctored it up a little bit.
Legs on it and
It actually looks presentable, right? But I wanna thank them for putting that on, um, because it, you know, these events are, are really important in terms of, um, bringing some, not just activities here in the city of Longdale, but a little culture, you know, more culture, you know? And, and arts has a tendency of doing that, you know, to a community, you know? No matter what the medium is, um, so I wanna thank SMOA for, for doing that event. I look forward to partnering with them again, um, next year to publicize it even, even more, so, so that was good. I also attended, uh, Unite Here Local Eleven, had a community briefing and reception to celebrate, um, their fight for a fair contract for the hotel workers. I mean, this is a contract that's been in the fight, that's been in the works for, um, for, um, years. In short, they was able to realize, um, some increased contribution to their pension and of course, some salary, um, um, wage increases amongst some other victories. So that was a good celebration. Also attended the sanitation district, um, our joint, uh, meeting. It's joint because it's with all the sanitation districts, uh, within, within the, the region. Where we, um, voted to approve a contract for the, the employees, the Ask Me Employees. So that was a good meeting as well. Then I attended a regular meeting on a different day of sanitation district. Uh, where we talked about regular
Trash.
crap. Right? Sanitation, you know, um, issues. And so that was, that was a good meeting as well. I did attend the Gardena, um, the City of Gardena fireworks display. And there's, um, Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman, you, you mentioned how ours was, got to some point to where it was, got out of control. That was my, I think it's my third year going to their, their fireworks. I went last year, the year before last, I don't think I went, but then I went maybe a year before that. And this fireworks show has grown, right? So they're slowly, or fastly, I should say, growing out of that park, uh, Riley Park.
Yeah.
Because it's a big fireworks, um, display. Now, I would have to say, even though they had a fireworks show and it was totally free, they were not void of illegal fireworks at all. Cause it was, as they say, on and popping, um, in the city of Gardena. Some of the fireworks that you, that you heard in the city of Longdale probably came from, from Gardena. Because they were, you know, they, it was, it was on, even though they had a, a fireworks. So, you know, in, 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 conceptually, I'm, I'm okay with having fireworks, um, display. But, but not as a, as a means to somehow reduce the amount of illegals. Because when we had our fireworks, um, display, it did not reduce the amount of illegals. It was just as round, cause what you do, you typically, these, these, um, displays probably end like nine o'clock or whatever. They start, you know, it does, you know, and they go off for maybe about forty minutes or forty-five minutes, whatever. That's just enough time to get home to, to discharge your, your illegal fireworks, right? I have your own legal gathering or whatever you wanna do. So it, it, it did not, um, um, dissuade people in Longdale from having illegal fireworks. And it certainly did in the city of Gardena, not just this year, but last, last year. I just wanted to add that. And the last thing I would say I, um, attended was the employees appreciation luncheon, as mentioned, with the In-N-Out truck. Where I had the, the, um, I didn't have the chicken this time, they didn't have any chicken. I would've had the chicken. I had the grilled cheese.
On buns.
I wasn't prepared for it to be on a bun though. It was on a bun.
Yeah.
I wasn't prepared for that. That's a lot of, that's a lot of bread for grilled cheese, but, um, anyway, so. Those are all I have to add. With that, we only have ten more. It is time to adjourn. Did I, I adjourned last, last meeting, right? In someone's memory? I think that was last meeting.
I believe so, Mary.
You don't think I have to do that this time? Okay, okay.
We don't have any of those this time.
Okay. So let me, let me find the last, August fifth. Okay, the next meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at August fifth in these council chambers. Anything else I need to read? Oh, at six thirty. It is now, ten fifteen, we are adjourned. Thank you.